The Board of Alderman, very good meeting. For April 26th is now called to order. We ask that you stand with us for the invitation to be followed by the page of allegiance. Let us pray. Merciful Father, we come to thank you for this day and the multitude of blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We have come to do the business of the town of Spring Lake, so we ask your divine guidance. We ask your presence. We ask your blessings to all of us, that we may do what we have been called and taken a sworn oath to do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I beg your leave in.
To the flag of the United States of America. Into the God for which it stands, one nation, one nation. In the God of the nation. In the Lord of the nations.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And we say good evening to each of you. Our board, are there any additions or deletions to this agenda? Alderman O'Gara.
Yes, I have two individuals that won't be on the Recreation Committee. All of us. Okay. And the other one is Robynus Torres. Also wanted to do a good for the order.
Do what?
A good for the order. Just the things that are good enough.
You want to do. Hold on a minute. Okay, item nine I. The name again, please.
Natasha.
Tara Roble.
That's the other one.
And the other one?
Estasha.
Okay, now your third point or your next point, please.
Uh, if you were as good as you can, it'd be considered good of the order.
Good of the order.
Yes, sir.
Good of the order. Is that, uh, we want to find a place to put it. Uh, nine. Okay, after come after, okay, nine K. After the application for the Recreation Advisory Committee. And you call that good of the order?
Yes, sir.
O R D E, order. Is that right?
Are there others? Alderman Cooper.
Um, consider we have to vote on that. Could we get a little, uh, whether we want to add it or not? Can we get a little explanation of what that is?
That might be appropriate. Alderman O'Gara.
Uh, it's not up to take that long. I guess I could do it right now.
No, sir.
Well. Well, it's kind of hard to explain to you and I tell you. Uh, one item was asking to bring up King Krass. Uh, which should be opening up on Friday.
Well, you're almost there, though. Uh, good of the order. Just briefly describe what you intend to.
Just cover a few subjects dealing with the town. Uh, not to banish anybody.
Uh, okay, subjects dealing with the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other additions or deletions? Uh, Ms. Willenway.
Mayor, can we please remove item eight B, approval of Metro Net Letter of Agreement? We will review that possibly at the next meeting.
Strike item eight B. To be reviewed at the next meeting, possibly. Item three, can we get a motion? If there are no other additions or deletions?
Question.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Samantha, for the public hearing case, the P twenty-one zero five, is that going to be striked as well?
Uh, Mrs. Jamie with the Comer County Claiming Department, when we get to the items, she will come up and explain how we're going to handle that. But what it is, it will be going from a rezoning to a conditional zoning, so, um, the application type will be changing. So technically, we are not withdrawing it, but Ms. Jamie will explain that during that time. So please keep it on the agenda as it was noticed.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion for a proof? Alderman Jackson.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the added additions.
Alderman O'Gara.
I second that motion.
It is then moved.
Uh, Mayor, in readiness.
In readiness. Alderman Cooper.
I think it needs to, uh, the motion has to say with the additions and deletions, because we did remove something.
So, would you restate your motion, please?
Yes, sir. I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the deletion of A B eight B, the approval of Metro Net Letter of Agreement, Samantha Woolen- Wooler. And with the additions on nine I, the application for the Recreation Advisory Committee, Tara Robles. Um, J, application for the Recreation Advisory Committee, Stasha Arnold. And also on K, the, um, the good of the.
Good of the order.
Good of the order.
Okay, is that second? Alderman Cooper.
I second that motion.
It is then moved and seconded, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, sign of nay. Item four, approval of consent items. Alderman Cooper.
Um, thank you. I make a motion that we approve of the consent items, draft minutes of the April twelfth, twenty twenty-one work session meeting.
Alderman Sutherland.
Second that motion.
It is then moved and seconded, we approve the consent items, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, sign of nay. Further comments, uh, three minutes per speaker. We do have one person signed for the further comments, and that is Randy Bussie. Would you approach and give us your name again, please, and your address?
Yes, my name is Brandy Bussie, and I live at six-two-four Balsallwood Circle.
Okay, you may begin.
All right, um, so I was coming here, um, to request to see, um, I live in a residential area off of Chapel Hill Road. And currently, the speed limit on Chapel Hill Road is forty-five miles per hour. There's hilly areas and there's big potholes that cause a lot of the traffic. There's only two lanes of traffic. And, uh, sometimes the vehicles have to go into the other line of traffic, and it has caused accidents. And I wanted to see if I could bring to the board today to see if they could possibly lower the speed limit in that particular area. They're also doing cutting where they're doing, um, a part off of Chapel Hill Road. And some of the wildlife kind of jumps out into the road as well. And in order to slow down, if you're going fifty miles per hour and you're going over one of those hills, it's kind of a blind spot. So that can cause accidents as well. We also have pedestrians and people who ride their bikes, um, at night, even during the day. To where if they're crossing the road or if they're going up that hill, it's a blind spot, and it could possibly cause an accident, and somebody could get hurt. So what I was bringing to the board today was to see if there's any way possible that they would consider lowering the speed limit in that residential area. Because there's quite a few houses in that area and a lot of kids that play in that area. And I just wanted to make it safer for my community.
Absolutely, yes, that's a task for internal town managers, for real concern as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item six, Mr. Lee Grissom. For the presentation of fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right, I'm here to present the, and shall leave the mask on. Yes. No, no, yes.
Well, the mic, I think, has the white, has the microphone been wiped down?
Yes.
Because that's typically what people do when, once it's been wiped down and holding it in the mic.
If I could do it just like this, I'd be okay. Probably just a little more. Okay. I'm here to present the audit, well, audit for June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And for that audit, we issued an unmodified opinion, used to be known as a clean opinion, meaning that, uh, these statements, which you should have a copy of, are free of material misstatement in our professional opinion and can be relied on. We issued the audit this year, uh, two months late. Uh, this year was, we had an extension due to COVID. Uh, the audit was due Jan- uh, January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Um, so we got the audit, we issued the audit officially, uh, March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. So it was two months late. So remember, nineteen was ten months late, and fiscal year eighteen was fourteen months late. So the towns had significant issues. Um, there was a cyber attack this year that happened that delayed the audit. Um, I think we would have hit the deadline. I think we would have made the January thirty-first deadline, but, um, there were, I think it was a ransomware attack that occurred that delayed the audit further. Uh, so we did have, you know, timeliness was an issue this year as well. Uh, management provided full access of records during this audit. Uh, there were no new accounting policies. We had no disagreements, and other than the timeliness, um, we didn't have any other difficulties, um, getting the audit completed. Couple of notable events before we get started with the numbers and the findings that we have come across. Your finance director of about four or five years left during this audit. He left, uh, three quarters of the way into the fiscal year, ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty audit. So the last quarter of the audit, your AP clerk, uh, my understanding, she was moved into the interim finance director role. Um, and then there's been a vacancy, I guess, since, until recently, I think Samantha's now the finance director. So, so that was Bush Watson. So he left, um, in March of two thousand twenty. So there was only a couple of, uh, months left in the fiscal year. The other notable event, as I'm sure all you guys know, Spring Lake Acquisitions Nonprofit was created in August of two thousand nineteen. That was the beginning of this fiscal year under audit. So in these financial statements, and I'm sure we'll go over it at some point during the presentation, but the SLA is considered a blended component unit of the town because the town relies basically financial, uh, the nonprofit is relying on the town basically for all support. So that entity is in these financial statements. Um, and I'll just note the page, and I'm sure we'll go over it at some point, but, um, page nineteen is the revenue expenditures of the SLA. The budget, the actual page there, and the balance sheet can be found on page fourteen in a separate column. And the main thing to note about Spring Lake Acquisitions, and I hope management and Nancy and Adam and all them have been talking to you guys about that. So it's nothing new, but there's a three-point-five million dollar loan on the books, which the town has a financial commitment to, at least to consider paying that loan off. Um, and for the, for the year ended under audit, the town paid almost eighty-seven thousand of interest expense, um, for that SLA loan. Um, and then I'll point out too, hopefully you guys know this already, August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, which is right around the corner, there's an eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar payment, um, come due. One of my recommendations, and I was going to go through that at the end, is figure out something with that payment, to see if you can refinance it or, or. I mean, that's a lot of money that the town has to come up with, so I would make that a priority. All right, before we get into the graphs, I'm just gonna, um, quick, a couple of highlights. I'll cut to the chase. The fiscal year nineteen-twenty year was a really bad year, pretty much the worst case for the town of Spring Lake. Um, we've been auditing the town for six years. The fiscal, the twentieth, uh, the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty audit was the worst one in the six years. Um, there's no really way around, you know, no other way to say that. Um, we had eight findings to report, which we'll go through. So the hardest part of this presentation is decide what to go through, what maybe what you've already, maybe you've heard a lot of it from Nancy and maybe Samantha as well, so. Um, if there's any part you want me elaborate specifically on, and, and the reason I gave you four different handouts, all that, all the information I think is the most important is in those handouts as well. Um, your general fund took a nosedive, cash was down, and, and you'll see the charts of cash. Cash is down and your accounts payable is up. So your accounts payable and accrued expenses was eight-hundred thousand on June thirtieth. So the way you look at that is that could have easily been paid, and that would have reduced your cash even more than what you'll see in the graphs. Um, if it wasn't for the grant money, the town's utility funds, um, would have, would have been down significantly. There was five-hundred-and-twelve thousand that came into your utility funds this year. It kind of kept the water sewer afloat, but as we'll look in the graphs, your utility funds needs work as well. Um, and four, and four out of the last five years, you guys have had, or the town's had significant budget violations. And this is the, this is the worst of the six years, or of the five years that we've reported, budget violations. Um, there was over one-point-five million dollars in most, most departments. So, um, yeah, not a, not a good thing.
You're talking from the graphs? Are you talking?
No, I'm just talking generally, and then we'll get into graphs.
Okay.
And I'll go through this.
And as you do, would you make sure that we know what page you're referencing?
I will, I will. Yeah, stop, stop me anytime.
Hold on, Mr. O'Gara.
Those are budget violations, uh, that's from our different sections, overspending?
Um, there's two findings related to overspending, and there are six other ones, unrelated to spending. But we'll get to that. I'll try not to put you guys to sleep. And again, if, I gave, I gave you a lot of information. If you want to look at it later, email me, call me, ask me any questions, my contact information.
Mr. Grissom. Excuse me. Alderman O'Gara.
The budget violations are that from the year twenty twenty, or is it twenty twenty?
Yeah, it's, it's July first, two thousand nineteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And, and a lot of your people that were in management are now gone, well, all of them. Well, Mr. Watson's long gone, and, you know, Mr. Gerald's gone as well.
And you're saying some of these findings that you're finding for the budget, the budget violation came from when Mr. Watson was?
He was there majority of the year, three quarters. He left in March, two thousand twenty.
Then report to Mr. Gerald?
Correct, correct.
And then you report to us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I got, I know.
I don't think, uh.
Mr. Watson didn't report to Mr. Gerald.
Can we do this, please?
I'm sorry.
Can we do this? Let him proceed, please. Uh, and then that way, uh, if there's a question pertinent to what he has said, we can, uh, we can ask him to explain. Please.
And I'll try to run through this, uh, this part quickly. Um, this was unusual. We found that there were fifteen, roughly fifteen thousand dollars of missing credit card receipts. That was new this year. We'd never run into that. Um, that was not a scope limitation for the audit, just because we could kind of tell what they were based on the charges made, but, um, we had issues, you know, management couldn't get us the receipts for those charges. Uh, and that's a finding, that's one of the eight findings. Uh, we had a, we found a ten-thousand-dollar cellphone allowance paid to one employee, um, at one pay period that nobody caught. We caught it in the audit, so the town's really owed not, almost ten grand, uh, nine thousand nine hundred, needs to be recouped. Um, so that was a, that's also a finding. Bank recs are still an issue. That's, that's been an issue for most of the six years we've audited the town. Nancy says she's on it. She said, uh, two weeks ago, it's been a priority, or it is a priority, so that needs to get done. Um, any questions at this point?
I have some.
Alderman. Alderman Jackson.
I'm sorry. You saying that one of the, the findings was charges for credit card receipts that you didn't find?
Well, management could not supply them.
Do you know where the credit card receipts come from, what department it came from, that's, that's not supplying it?
Uh, maybe ask management, they'll know. Or they may want to speak on that.
Do you have any idea where these credit card receipts, what department they came from?
Um, it was primarily economic development.
Mr. Uh, Ms. Willenway.
We do have extra copies of the audit. Um, we do have some paper copies that we can give out, because we have some booklets here. Um, so you can contact, um, Ms. Melissa, the interim town clerk, and she will be happy to give you, uh, a paper copy. And this also will be posted on our website. Just as years past audits will also be posted for appealing.
Alderman O'Gara, then Alderman Jackson.
I was shocked to hear I had a ten-thousand-dollar telephone there. But I'm sure, uh, management will bring us up to date on that. Uh, Mr. Watson, everybody needs to understand, did not work for Daniel Gerald. He worked for the board. So, uh, we can't bring Mr. Gerald into what happens with the financial. Thank you.
Alderman Jackson, then Alderman Sutherland.
I was concerned about these charges for the credit card. I guess when we address the cellphone, we can address that more in detail, the charges for the credit, credit card. Because you say you think they came from the economic development, do you, I mean, how do you, how do you know that?
We are working with the state auditor's office, and they're, um, investigating several allegations, including these missing credit card receipts.
But if they're missing, how do you know what department they go to?
It's based on the charges. They're using various different documents to investigate, um, what those charges were and how, um, these are being discovered through bank reconciliations and other processes that have been behind.
Okay, so you're just saying that they're missing, you're not trying to allocate that there was foul play in it?
Yes, ma'am, so they're missing, and once the investigation is complete, then we will release that information to the public.
Got you. Thank you.
Alderman Sutherland.
Ms. Samantha basically said, the reason being audits, and I have the last time you audited when Mr. Gerald was here, and you walked out, and you gave us the audience that everything was great. But anyway, we found out everything wasn't great. Um, the bank reconciliations, that's the reason why I think Nancy and, uh, Mr. Lindsay and the ones in place had not been done. So I think we kind of catching up on that. But if I look at page nineteen, the economic development, that line item straight across, uh, there's nothing on page nineteen. That's the revenue at the expenditures, page nineteen?
Right.
All the way across, there's no, no numbers in there. But if you look at page eighteen, we're the final budget, and then we have ninety thousand three hundred and sixty-three actual. Can you just elaborate a little bit on that? Because there's nothing for economic development that they've been working.
Oh, oh, yeah, the way page eighteen and nineteen work together.
Uh-huh.
So really, it's supposed to be one page. So the categories on nineteen have a lot more, um, rows, because it's, it's in conjunction with eighteen. So if that was cleaned up, you wouldn't see all those, you wouldn't see all those.
Right, so what you're saying, then that ninety thousand three hundred and sixty-three for the economic development on page nineteen, since you elaborated on page nineteen, would been moved over into one of those columns, but which column would it have been moved to?
Wait, which, um, sorry, which nineteen? Maybe, what's the?
Economic development on page nineteen.
And they bind it.
And you go all the way across the line item?
Mm-hmm.
There's no amounts in there.
That's right, because they're not, they don't apply to that.
Okay, but on page, uh, eighteen, it's the two rows for economic development. It says ninety thousand three hundred and sixty-three.
Okay, yeah, it, it is related to economic development, but it was not inside, that activity was town, on the town side, and not the nonprofit. So they're two separate.
The nonprofit is the land acquisition.
Mm-hmm, that's right. But those expenses were related to, I, I'm ninety-nine percent sure they were related to the same activity.
Uh-huh. All right, thank you.
Alderman Cooper.
Um, thank you, madam. Uh, when I'm looking at that, uh, mine, Adam, the negative, does that mean that that was the portion of that money that was not budgeted?
That's correct.
Okay. So going all the way down, all these negatives are monies that were not budgeted?
Correct.
Okay.
And one thing, Ms. Cooper, um, if Bush would have been here, and I, I shouldn't be speaking for him, but what would have likely happened? At the very end of the year, he would have made a lot of amendments. So it would have, in total, probably would have been very over budgeted by quite a bit, but he would have, because he wasn't in the last quarter of the year. Uh, he would have made amendments, I'm pretty sure, just knowing the history of when he was here.
May I ask that the board, uh, when you're referencing numbers, please give us, uh, Lee gave us four books. If you give us the book and the page number, that way we can see what you're talking about.
Okay, well, I was on page eighteen.
Okay, page eighteen.
Yeah, I was going on the book.
Okay.
And Ms. Cooper, wait, oh, sorry to interrupt. But if you want a detail of all the budget overages, there is a, um, it's on page thirty-one. That, that's a summary of all of them. That's probably a good page to flag.
Okay, but I did want to just mention that, um, the local government commission website has all of them, all of the audits. It, it's, it's public information, so if you go to their website, you can find audits from past years or any town and municipality. For those in the audience who might have, uh, questions or wanted to just go and find it on your own.
All right, let's, um, let's go through the rest of the findings. I've hit on most of them. Let's, let's turn to page ninety of the report. These are, um, these are considered yellow book findings, internal control findings. The first one is segregation of duties. This is a repeat finding from two thousand nineteen. Um, this one is basically because you're short a couple of positions in the finance department to have, you know, the ideal separation of duties. So essentially, um, specifically, your AP clerk has too many duties to properly segregate the duties from an internal control standpoint. Let's go to page ninety-one. Now, this, this is the budget overage finding, and remember, I noted page thirty-one. Thirty-one shows a, a summary of all the budget overages. So if you want to, you know, when you look at this finding, it's, it's basically saying, you know, you got to spend within the budget that the board approves, or make an amendment which is approved by the board as well. Um, again, uh, look at page thirty-one for a summary there. Page ninety-two, bank reconciliations. We've already talked about that. That's been an issue for, for several years. Um, and that's definitely a priority item that needs to get fixed immediately. Let's go to page ninety-three. Now, ninety-three is pre-audit. That's very similar to the first finding of budget. It's, it's the process where you make sure, the town makes sure they spend within the budget, um, for the majority of the purchases. What, what happened here, uh, if you look at the condition, uh, we found in May of two thousand twenty that land was purchased without proper pre-audit documentation. There were no approval signatures by the interim finance director or town manager. That was right about the time Bush left, so I don't know if that was convenience, but we, we stumbled across that, uh, during the audit. So that triggered this, this page, ninety-three. Um, that's. So that triggered this, this page, ninety-three, um, that finding. Let's go to page ninety-four. Missing credit card receipts, we've already talked about that one. Page ninety-five, cell phone allowance error, we've already talked about that one. Page ninety-six, uh, invoices not turned in timely. We came across this, we noticed that invoices were paid late this year, so this is, that, that opens up a whole lot of issues. When you're trying to stay within the budget and invoices aren't coming in on a timely basis, it's difficult, difficult to make sure that you're spending within the budget. Alright, the last finding, uh, material journal entries. During the course of this audit, there were some very large material journal entries that we had to make to the Spring, uh, Spring Lake Acquisitions Fund, General Fund, Public Safety Grants, Project Fund, and the Water Sewer Fund. The effect of that is the board didn't have, possibly wouldn't have sufficient information needed to make an accurate assessment of the town's financial position on a timely basis. And that's, that's all the findings, the corrective action plan is on page ninety-eight to one hundred, and you can read what the town's response. Samantha was the interim town manager at that point, and, and you could see her name is the person of contact in the corrective action. Any questions about that?
Old woman Jackson.
Explain page thirty-one to me again, please. You're saying that everything that on thirty-one was money that we spent that we didn't have?
That wasn't budgeted.
That wasn't budgeted?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and one of the big, and, and I have a recommendation sheet, and I worked with, um, Nancy over there about this, but she, she had noticed this as well. The, um, original budgets each year that were voted on, for the last six years, they, they really were not, for the most part, realistic with, particularly as the expenses kept trending upwards each year, beginning in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, started trending upward, and this year went, you'll see in the graphs, it, it took another kick. You know, the budgets just were not realistic to what they, the expenditure needs were, so, um, and that's reflected here.
So you're saying the Spring Lake Acquisition, that's the, the nonprofit, we had overs, over expenditures or not budgeted, let me make that correct, not budgeted in water and sewer, we had the Stormwater Fund that wasn't budgeted, Public Safety Grants and Project Fund wasn't budgeted, and Recreation Capital Project Funds wasn't budgeted? What would be that Recreation Capital Fund, is that, uh, is that the splash pad?
Let me see. No, there's a, there's a Recreation Capital Project Fund in the, in the back statements, that's what that is.
Do we know what it is?
Yeah, hold on, one, one second, one second. There it is, it's on page seventy-five. And there actually, there wasn't any, um, expenditures in that fund for this fiscal year. So that was just a care, and that would have been a simple fix with the budget amendment, and make that one go away.
So basically, we having issues with what we got going on because we're not budgeting money, we're just doing stuff and not budgeting where the money's coming from? Is that basically in a nutshell?
That's what, that's what the, yeah. Alright, you guys ready to go to the graphs?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright. Yeah, it's, it's stapled separately.
So the packet that says SPD something.
That's right, that's right. Alright, first page of the graph, this is cash general fund. And as I mentioned, but, touched on it briefly, the general fund really took a hit in fiscal year twenty, which you can see, um, really mo- most of these graphs, you'll see a downward trend, beginning in seventeen. So seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, you see the downward trend, and then fiscal year twenty on the far right, that's your cash, your general fund at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Let's go to page two. This is cash enterprise funds, this is your utility funds, um, for the most part, it appears your utility funds have been carrying the entire town. And you can see fiscal year twenty, you're sitting at two point four million dollars cash in the, in the enterprise funds. So that's, that remains steady. Let's go to page three. Now this is a projection, I don't normally do this, um, management, uh, kind of pushed me to, to want to make sure to demonstrate about cash, because the cash of Spring Lake is pulled together, you, you're in a central depository fund. So some of it kind of gets confused, but what I did is I took a projection, so you have two thousand twenty, that's actual cash. Two thousand twenty-one column, twenty-two and twenty-three are projections based on spending at the levels of fiscal year twenty, so this audit. So as you can see, by two thousand twenty-three, the town would be basically near zero at current spending levels.
Old woman Jackson.
Okay, so you're saying the numbers in the red, the two twenty-one, two twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three are projections? If we keep on doing everything like we're doing in twenty-twenty?
Absolutely.
So if we stop doing what we're doing in twenty-twenty, then these numbers are, wouldn't be like this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now let's go to page four. Now this is the projection, if you enter in the eight hundred and seventy-five thousand due to the SLA nonprofit. So your cash is even, takes a tragic turn, um, in twenty, it's, if it's paid in August of two thousand twenty-one, you can see that these numbers in twenty-three go negative about one point six million.
Old woman Jackson.
Um, the numbers, I want to ask you for what you just said, you're saying that management had you, that you normally do not do this, but management asked you to do this, is that showing us what the numbers would look like if we kept doing what we're doing?
Correct.
So it's kind of like a warning?
That's right, that's right, that's right. And, and, yeah. Alright, let's go to page five. Now this is the outstanding debt of the town, and as you can see, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, you know, trending downward as you're paying debt, and two thousand twenty goes up, uh, specifically because of three point five million dollars, um, of debt on the SLA, which is now in your statements.
That's what I was going to ask about, will you have it in there? So the SLA, that's at eight hundred?
That's, that's the payment, that's the payment due, but the entire balance is three point five million.
Right.
And that eight seventy-five, you've probably looked at the schedule, but it, I think there's one of those payments that come due about every year after it starts in August.
Old woman Jackson.
And the three point five million that's due, that's due to the Spring Lake Acquisition, the nonprofit buying all that land?
Correct.
So if we sold the land, we could get rid of some of this stuff that we have no, you know, can't do nothing with anyway?
Yeah, that would be an option. Yeah, one of my urgings, when I started the audit, to me, the SLA was the most urgent thing, you know, we can cry about fifteen thousand dollar missing receipts, but I think something needs to happen on that immediately, and I, and I, I requested to, um, Nancy to get you guys to change the board and, you know, make some decisions. Or refinance the loan.
Land Acquisition Board?
Correct, correct.
Don't you, when you said board, you mean the board members on the board?
You guys.
You talking about the land acquisition, that board, right?
Correct, correct, correct.
And that's the board that has.
Because, because your, the employees that were no longer here were on the board, and I, you know, I was telling them, you know, jump on that immediately.
Yeah, you did deal with that.
So we changed, so they changed it to members of the board, our board that's on that board, so you're suggesting that our board members come off that board?
No, 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 I, I stay out of management decisions. Okay, here's page, page six. Now your waters, this is your water sewer, uh, operating income. Now from two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen, the town had done pretty well, staying in the black. But in the last two years, you see in nineteen and twenty, there's been an issue where the expenditures are more than the revenues, the operating revenues. So, um, in fiscal year into June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, you're at minus three sixty-nine, two thousand twenty are minus almost six hundred thousand.
Old woman Jackson, then old woman Cooper.
Is, could that be that we're, um, losing that because of COVID? And things that happened with us not, with the governor, and not, um, letting us collect bills and things like that?
Part, part of it is COVID.
Part of it's COVID.
But I would be, you know, if you say under thousands COVID, you still got, you still got something you need to address.
Okay, do you know what that is?
It would be either raising rates or, um, cutting expenses.
Old woman Cooper, then old woman O'Gara.
Thank you ma'am. Um, did we report, um, losses in our last, um, uh, audit?
Yes.
For the water and sewer?
Yes, that's the, you see the two thousand nineteen column, the red, the, on page six, that was what was reported.
And it was in the audit as well?
Correct, correct. And really, if you were to look at the graphs at that time, you think, you think it's anomaly, you know, one-time deal because all the other years were positive. But the fact that you have two fiscal years in a row, you know, I think that's definitely something to, to address.
Old woman O'Gara.
I think that's got something to do with the, uh, last few years. Every year, county, county of PWC charges us like a five percent hike, and they keep on doing that, pretty much a six percent. And we have not been passing that on to the customers, and it's getting to the point where we're going to have to smack.
Okay, let's go to page seven.
Old woman Jackson.
I'm sorry, just for clarity, I want to make sure I understand what, um, old woman O'Gara's saying. So we're saying these numbers in the red has a lot to do with the PWC raising our rates?
I can't, I can't.
You can't say that?
It's, it's, it's probably multiple, it might be
Some of it.
Maybe some, you know, too much salary, plus some COVID, you know, it's a lot of things mixed in. Okay, let's go to page seven. And, and I go over this, uh, every year, this is your number of months in reserve, your general fund. This is essentially your unassigned general fund balance divided by general fund expenditures. So last time I was here in two thousand nineteen, you were about, you were almost at two months, which is what the local government commission recommends. And you dropped into the negatives, the town did, in two thousand twenty to almost a negative one. Let's go to the next page, page eight. And this is your general fund, fund balance by fiscal year, and essentially, it's saying the same thing, this is your, essentially your assets minus your liabilities, the equity in the general fund, you see, it really dropped off significantly from nineteen to twenty, you went from almost one point eight million in general fund fund balance to six hundred and thirty-one thousand. But you can see it's been trending downward from sixteen, that's the peak in two thousand sixteen. And then seventeen, it was a slight decrease, eighteen, a little bit of a decrease, and then nineteen, twenty really just drop off.
Old woman Jackson.
Do you know why? Because we keep saying this stuff is dropping, this stuff ain't averaging right, but there's no reason why, what, do you know, do you even have a general idea of why? Is it decisions that when the board is making?
Absolutely, one thing, absolutely budgeting over what the board approved by a significant number, and you saw that, that's on page thirty-one.
Yes.
Absolutely, and just, and then talking with management, and even your prior finance director who's no longer here, I mean, he thought there were probably two or three, set, too many salaries, two or three extra salaries. I don't understand why he didn't bring it to the board earlier, but he knew about it, and he thought that at the time. So I'd, I'd say it's a function of multiple things.
Now, is there any way for us to pinpoint what those multiple things are? We have a lot of rumors going around about why we're not, why we don't have what we have, and we need to clear that up. And I'm pretty sure the citizens wants to know exactly too. And we got, like you said, us budgeting over, then what we have, salaries is another way, so is there any way to pinpoint exactly why we're over? While we're, while we're in the red?
Well, what I did is, uh, the last piece of the presentation is recommendations, and I, I would think that these recommendations will probably lead, lead to the, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Old woman, uh, Suggler, but I also think that, uh, Nancy's going to help me find some things too. Thank you Nancy, old woman Suggler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was going to state the same thing, because there is, uh, with the proper audit, again, I thank you again Nancy, I know you're probably tired of me thanking you and Mister Lindsay and Samantha. But, uh, Ms. Wood had stated when she came, as well as we was well over in salaries and employees, and we had so many. She stated that as well during her audit time. So, um, looking at page eight, it says two point eight million decrease in the general fund balance from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. And, um, which the fund balance is at a zero in, uh, upon one, which had never been prior to me serving on the board. So again, um, with the property, you normally would present this board every three months with an update, regardless of who was here. But that was in your contract, so we kind of fell behind on that, so hopefully, we can continue to go forward. With the recommendations with your firm, as well as the recommendation that the state have stated to us. So, I was just looking on page eight where it says two point eight million decrease.
That's right, and, you know, the splash pad was very expensive, um, which that was, that was approved by the board, so that, that was a pretty big chunk of money. That, that was budgeted, which, um.
It's two point eight million come from, I'm sorry.
Ms. Willenwafer, uh, and then, uh, old woman Cooper, then old woman Jackson.
Thank you ma'am, I'm prepared for some questions that I want to back some paths, a part of the problem with the fund balance replenishing two point eight million dollars from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty is due to fund balance appropriations each year trying to make the budget balance, so
Force balance.
Um, not living within the means of the budget, um, and instead of making cuts, using that general fund to balance the budget each year, um, and it's been done repetitively, and therefore, um, that's one of the reasons for the replenishment in the general fund. So this year, that, um, will not be done for the, the budget, we are working on budget, and we'll be presenting that in, in May and June to the board and to the public.
Just force balance it, so it can balance that, uh, June thirtieth?
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
We will have them by June thirtieth.
Thank you.
Uh, who did I call, oh, okay, old woman Cooper.
Thank you ma'am. Um, I, I, I heard that the splash pad was mentioned, and I, um, and I know it's been mentioned several times. It really wasn't that costly, looking at, uh, last year's audit, we only spent three hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars on that, and that was budgeted, so I don't think that accounts for a lot of these, um, over expenditures.
Uh, Ms. Cooper, it, it crossed over two fiscal years, there were some in the previous fiscal year, actually more expenditures. And I think it was the eighteen, the eighteen fiscal year, so it was, it was well over three hundred thousand.
But we did budget for them, right?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and last year's budget, I saw that it, we budgeted for it, so it wasn't one of our over expenditures.
Okay, correct, that's, that sounds right. Let's go to page ten, I think Ms. Jackson's question about some of the why, um, is explained on page ten, the graphs. So what this is, is your, uh, public safety expenditures in blue, and general government in red. But specifically your public safety, you know, it's police, fire, I think inspections is in that category as well. You can see the increase, you see, um, if you use fifteen and sixteen, those were your good years, um, particularly fifteen, so if you compare uh, seventeen to fifteen, you were ten percent higher. And then if you, and that's about the same for seventeen and eighteen, and then fiscal year nineteen, you were seventeen percent higher than fiscal year. And then fiscal year nineteen, you were seventeen percent higher than fiscal year fifteen. And then this audit, it just, it just goes up to another level. You're almost at thirty-seven percent more than you were in fifteen. So, as I was saying, the, the trends have been negative, but this year kind of took it, took it to another, um, another level with, with expenditures.
I would want to Jackson.
So, with these expenditures you're saying for the public safety fund, do we know what department in the public? Cause you have fire, you have police, and then you said you have safe, um, especially?
Correct.
So, do we know what department spent, had this increase in spending?
It's on, uh, what you would do, it's on page sixty-seven, the budget to actual.
Is that in the book again?
Oh, sorry, that's the report, the big report. And what you would do is, um, all the audit reports are online on the website too. You could compare, you could set up a spreadsheet and take this and look at the other audits and see what they were spending by the, by the exact same page.
I got you, okay.
If you wanted to look at it. But that, to me, is one of the significant increases in, in why the general fund's been decreasing.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to the recommendations. You see this little two-page, stapled together. Now, I did this because there were so much to go through. I figured I would just, cause there's just a lot of noise, a lot of, you know, distractions. But I think these six items, um, if you're not doing it already, I think you need to make it a priority, at least in my, from my judgment. Um, the first one is increased general fund, unassigned fund balance and cash. And as you saw those graphs, um, you know, definitely need to stop the bleeding on that, and I'm sure you're already moving in that direction. So, I, in, in the recommendation, either raise revenue or reduce expenses where possible. But it does need to, um, the fund balance and the general fund needs to be replenished by a pretty significant number. I mean, I would just throw in a number out, the, uh, I think there was the board member who's not here, he was asking me how much it would take. But I mean, I'm, I'm thinking off the top of my head, somewhere around two point five million. That's where, where the improvement needs to be. The second one, raise utility rates. I know that's unpopular and I can't believe I'm saying it out loud. To cover water and sewer fund expenses. And you can see those are the losses that we talked about in the graphs, you know, almost six hundred thousand operating loss in the fiscal year twenty. And then nineteen, you had a three hundred and sixty-nine thousand operating loss. Um, and that, to me, signals, you know, something, something needs to change. Number three, and I, and I think you guys are already working on this to improve the budget process, I know Samantha just mentioned it. The original budgets haven't really been realistic. So, just, just an overhaul of the budget process is a priority. Number four, the finance director must spend below the budget. This really shouldn't be said, but like I said on page thirty-one, those budget findings were pretty egregious. I mean, the board sets, improves the budget, but you really should be able to expect your finance director and manager to, you know, to make sure the town's following, I mean, make sure they're following that. So, that's, there's really no excuse for it. So, and, and hiring a competent finance director and town manager, that's number six, but that would, hopefully, that would fix a lot of these problems. Get a handle of the bank reconciliation is number five, and that's the last one. So, I, I think it'd be a good idea, since you now have an audit committee, to kind of go through these and make sure, check up and make sure you're, um, you know, addressing these recommendations, if you agree with them.
I would want to start on you.
Okay, so I want to lose my train of thought. In the beginning, but I want to debate on it. Uh, Ms. Wood get a chart for us, and I know how it falls under the category of who underneath the board in the hiring process. But I think that's been changed. We sent it to the, uh, General Assembly. But the finance director normally corresponds with the, uh, town manager. That's how the numbers, that's like what you just stated, and that's what I stated in the beginning. But I know the chart. But if they don't correspond with one another, then they bring it to the board. Then we try to balance a budget. That's how it's supposed to. We don't balance a budget because the department is asking for less this, um, year, uh, last year. That's no way to balance a budget. Ms. White, thank you.
I would want to Jackson.
So, I'm looking at the highest percentage of assists that you have here, and I agree with you on all of those. And one of the things I think is, is going to be pertinent for us to get on board is that we hire a competent finance director. Because even though we had a finance director previously, Mr. Butch Watson, who was qualified and stuff, he still didn't do what he was supposed to do. And even, and he is the top-notch in reality, if you're gonna be realistic, like I always am. It starts with the top, and the top was a finance director. Even though he may have to talk to the town manager, it starts with him. So, he can only, the town manager can only do what the finance director is telling him what's going on. So, we definitely need a finance director that is qualified and experienced to be able to help us move it forward. As well as, like you said, in number six, to hire, uh, finance and a town manager so they can work together. Because with the changes coming, the finance director, when that change hit, will fall upon the town manager. So, those two positions is pertinent that we hire somebody that is qualified with some experience to make sure that we move forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
My Christmas tree is not lighting up, so I guess there aren't anymore.
We've talked about this forever.
We, we, we thank you for, uh.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comprehensive report. Okay, I, I think that there are some answers on the way. Uh, Susan McCullen and her staff. All right. Are you alone?
No, sir.
You, you want me to introduce your, your one of the staff?
I'm a lot shorter than Lee. Okay, um, my name's Sharon Edinson, Deputy Treasurer for State and Local Government Finance, and, um, I'm gonna kind of kick us off here. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Susan, um, to go through the fiscal books, fiscal accountability agreements for the town. Before we get into that, though, I do want to speak on a couple of items that Mr. Grissom mentioned and some of the questions that you have as board members. Um, it is the finance officer's responsibility to make sure the town does not overspend its budget. But there's some other things that have to happen too. Number one, you have to have a structurally sound budget, which y'all have not had in several years. Anytime you spend fund balance to balance your budget, that means that you have less revenue than you have expenditures, and you're taking money out of savings essentially to balance. And what happens if you do that year after year? Eventually, you run out of money, right? Um, so that's one thing. The budget numbers haven't been realistic even, and I know Lee mentioned this as well. You know, even though the budget still wasn't balanced, it was probably even more out of balance than we realized because the revenue estimates were so far off. Once you do get a good budget in place, and I am confident that, that Samantha and her team are gonna do that for you based on what we have learned talking with them and discussing with them, uh, previously. The budget has to be enforced, and that starts at the very top with the board. All right, the finance officer does have the ability to say no if something comes across that is not in the budget. And whoever you put in that position needs to learn how to say that word, unfortunately. But the other thing that has to happen is you have to have a strong pre-audit process in place that catches these over expenditures before they even happen. So, what I mean by that? Pre-audit is broken down into two steps. The first step is where you stop the overspending. And what happens is somebody comes to you and says, well, we need to buy, I don't know, and I'm not picking on public safety, but we need to buy, buy a new police car. All right, you look in the budget, there's not enough money left in the budget to pay for a new police car, so you say no. You can't buy a new police car this year unless you can figure out where you're gonna take the money from someplace else, okay? Once you've ordered the car, so say that step doesn't happen, the police car is ordered, it comes in, you get the bill. At that point, the finance officer can look at the budget and say, no, this budget, there's no appropriation for this, and can refuse to pay it. They also have to sign the check saying, yes, I've done this, there's money in the budget, and there's money in the bank account. So, again, this goes back to the other issue, one of the other issues the town's having is the bank recs being behind. Even if there is money in the budget, if there's no money in the bank account, it doesn't much matter what's in the budget. So, these are things that all have to work together to get your budget under control. All right, putting your budget amendments all on at the end of the year may fix it from an audit presentation point, but it does not go to the root of the problem, which is that you have to get a handle on this as expenses are occurring. Okay, you can't wait until the bills come in. The other thing I wanted to mention is, um, the fund balance for the town, as Lee explained, it's, it's in the negative, quite honestly. In the general fund, your target should be somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty percent of your expenditures based on what other towns your size have as fund balance available. Now, it may be a little higher than that, it may be a little lower than that, but that, it should be somewhere in that neighborhood. Obviously, you're not gonna get there in a year, you're probably not gonna get there in two or three years because you have a pretty big hole to dig out of at this point. But as a board, you need to set those targets and say, okay, in five years, we want to be here, in seven years, we want to be here. That's part of your job as a board to determine, along with your staff, you know, what those targets are gonna be. And then there were numerous questions about the over expenditures and, um, the water sewer fund. We talked about the over expenditures with the pre-audit. And I honestly do think that if you can get that, that pre-audit process in place and, you know, have people held accountable for enforcing it, that you can get your, your expenditure issue under control. On the water sewer fund, your cash flow for operations was negative two hundred and sixty thousand dollars last year. That means you had more cash going out by two hundred and sixty thousand dollars than you had cash coming in just by providing water and sewer service, all right? That doesn't include any of your capital outlay, doesn't include your debt service payments. That's just the cost of selling and providing water sewer services and collecting payments from your customers. And certainly, some of that probably was from COVID. The last three months of the year, you were prohibited from cutting people off for non-payment. But the year before, it was negative by about twenty thousand dollars. One of the things we're seeing in our evaluation is that it looks like you might be having a problem with collections, even before COVID hit. So, that's another thing that starts at the top. I don't know what your collection policy looks like for water sewer, I don't know how many days you give people to pay their bill before you cut off service. But that's something you might want to pull out and take a look at. And again, support your staff in enforcing that policy. Because if people are allowed to continue to get water sewer service without paying their bill, guess who's paying for that? The people that are paying the bill. Because eventually, you will, you won't have any choice but to go up on rates. All right, you can cut expenditures all you want to, but if you're still not collecting enough revenue to cover the cost of providing the service, that's gotta come from somewhere. Okay, now I'll move on to what we came here to talk about.
We do have one, one question. I would want to Jackson. I would want to start on you.
You had stated that, um, and excuse me if I can't get, cause I'm trying to remember. With the overspending, when they come to present a bill that we, y'all have money for, that we can refuse to pay it, we can do that?
The finance officer should refuse to pay it.
And it, okay, okay, cause, okay, I didn't know that, cause I was, I was told that once we presented a bill, we had to pay it.
If it was not properly pre-audited, you can hand it back to whichever department incurred that cost and say, you've got to return whatever item it is because we're not gonna pay it.
Now, this is just crazy. If we, if we do that, we may be subject to lawsuits from the person that we owe.
Correct.
But that's still okay?
Case law has held repeatedly. Obviously, I cannot speak for what a court would rule today.
Got you, I understand.
But historically, case rule, case law has ruled repeatedly that things without the pre-audit certificate are null and void.
And, and when you do, and, and, and I'm, I'm sorry for messing to me question. When you're talking about pre-audit, pre-audit stuff, you're talking about any kind of big things that we're doing, period?
Right, I mean, you don't want to have purchase orders and, and go through all that for, you know, the five dollar item.
Right.
But you should have a limit, anything over five hundred dollars or whatever your limit is. And in your case, I would set it pretty low because of the financial condition that you're in right now.
Okay.
Anything over that has to go through the purchase order process. So, you know, if, if the sanitation department needs to buy supplies, they would submit a purchase order to get permission to buy their supplies. At that point, it would get pre-audited, and it would say yes or no, the money's there, the money's not there.
Thank you.
Now, the finance officer, once the finance officer, if the finance officer refuses to sign something, it can be brought to the board. The board can override the finance officer. At that point, though, the liability for that transfers to the board.
I would want to start on you then, uh, Ms. Will and Weber.
Okay, thank you. You stated, if we had the proper, uh, budget amendments presented, and you was also stated that the department should not be spending money without proper, uh, budget amendment and whatever has been budgeted to that apart, department. So, heard you state that, I just want to kind of reiterate so we can enforce our policy and make sure it's proper from now on. You also stated that you have been communicating, I have the letters that we have received because it stated we was on a watch list because of, uh, our budgeting practice and spending. Ms. Samantha and Ms. Nancy and Mr. Lindsey, in the beginning, to get us straight and get us in order. You're working closely with them, and I can again, I thank you, uh, Ms. Samantha and Ms. Nancy. Because I think that for the citizens' awareness and how the money has been spent and the expenditures and how it was budgeted and the bound, uh, the budget force balanced, I say, because where the money was taken from. Also, the water and sewage, to my understanding, um, should not have monies taken out for employ, uh, employee's salary. Is that correct?
Well, whatever employees are assigned to work in the water sewer department, they're charged.
Economic development should have their own line item. I think according to Ms. Woods.
I would not expect to see economic development salaries paid out of water sewer fund.
That's what was in the budget, okay. I just want to make sure, and I think, uh, Nancy has caught that, and we will put it in the proper line item, so when Ms. Wood were here, she stated it should not have been, but that's what happened.
Okay, and, uh.
I do want to clarify one thing you said. You talked about department heads.
Mm-hmm.
On not overspending. One of the issues, and it's interesting to me, if you kind of step back and look at everything the town is dealing with. It's all interconnected. One of the issues you have with the records being so far behind is that department heads don't have good information to make their decisions on. So, it's really, you know, it's easy to say, oh, the department's heads are overspending, but they don't have good information.
Right.
To make their decisions on spending. And so, it, you know, it all works together. You gotta get the bank recs caught up so that you can give your department heads monthly reports so they know how much money they have to spend. And so, your finance officer knows whether or not they can effectively pre-audit. And, you know, it all works together in the end.
And the more, uh, quarterly finance reports we were getting from Mr. Watson, and we was asked questions about, uh, uh, bank, uh, the credit card statement, uh, of that nature, so I don't know what happened. But we are on the right track, as you stated, that Ms. Samantha, Ms. Nancy, and the people we have in place hiring a finance director as well as, uh, getting a town manager. So, thank you so much for receiving the calls and coming down to speak with us because I just think it is a sad day in spring late that we're on a watch list, and we may have to pass to our citizens to raise the water. We're already the highest paying. We're already the highest paying taxes municipality with no amenities or anything here. So again, thank you, I just want to say that.
Ms. Willenway, then Alderman Cooper, then Alderman Jackson.
I was going to briefly discuss the current PO policy, just for the general public and for the board, it was including some manager updates, but we currently have a penny PO policy, so that means nothing is purchased without a purchase order coming to my department, and then that amount, whatever that purchase is, is reviewed for what it's needed for. And then, all department heads provide a year-end estimate for each line item, and that's not what was total budgeted, but they're actually a year-end estimate of what they're going to spend. We look at a year-end estimate, how much they have left in that line item, to determine if a purchase can be made at that time, and then also reviewing all invoices as well. So there are multiple checks and balances in place at this time.
That's a point.
We will keep the P D purchase order policy for the very, at least for the next full budget year.
And given the town's current financial condition, I think that's why it's not a normal way for a town this size to operate, I will tell you that, but it's not normal for a town this size to have a negative fund balance available either.
Thank you. So, one of my questions, you mentioned water and sewer, and they had a lot of write-offs. Should we get a monthly report of write-offs from that department?
I don't know how many write-offs you've had, it's just the data just indicates that you're having an issue with collections, it may all be COVID-related, it may not, I don't know, without digging into that, but that's certainly something the board could ask for, as a report monthly of who is however many days or months behind, and what action's been taken.
Okay. And then, are there any finance reports that should not be available to the board itself? Is there any financial data that you believe we should not have access to?
Generally speaking, your financial data is all public record, with some exceptions. Anything that is proprietary related to an economic development project is not, and I'm not an attorney, so don't, you know, y'all need to ask Mr. Charleston this question, but this is my understanding, is, you know, anything that's proprietary in nature for a specific economic development project is protected until it no longer is necessary to be protected.
But if we ask for budget to actual or something like that?
Budget information is all public.
Thank you.
Alderman Jackson.
How do you, okay, I know Mr. Grissom had said that we had had some things that was over budgeted that wasn't on there, and we talking about the Spring Lake acquisitions, we had, if I'm not mistaken, the fire trucks that we bought, and things, other things that we've done, how do you propose to fix all that now? Because it seems to me that if we can, I know we've got things in order for future, but what do we do about the stuff that we have leaning? Do we, I mean, what is your suggestion to try to fix that, because they're still here, and it's still money that is due? We got the bills that we have on the fire trucks that we bought, we have the bills on the land that we have, do you have any idea or any suggestions?
On the land, I think you've got a couple of options. And again, I'm not an attorney, so let me just call it. Try to sell the property, try to at least refinance the debt. I don't know, I know the board feels like it has a moral obligation where those loans are concerned. I don't know that you have a legal one. Now, again, if you want to explore that, you need to work with an attorney that understands that type of law, and that certainly is not me. As far as the fire trucks go, I don't know if those agreements were pre-audited or not. You've taken delivery on the trucks, I assume, at this point. Again, I would consult with an attorney. Your attorney first, and then possibly somebody at the school of government. And you would have to weigh the option of if it's really not a valid contract versus what it does to your reputation, if you voided those contracts and sent the fire trucks back. You might get into a protracted legal battle, it's just not worth it, I don't know, you know, but that's, I would certainly explore your options on those kind of things, especially the big-ticket items like that.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Susan in just a minute to talk about this accountability agreement, but we have been working with staff to go over the items that were in the 2020 audit and the things that they're finding in the transactions and the budget for the 2021 fiscal year. A number of these have already been covered, the town's audit's been late for the last five years, although it was only a couple of months late this last year, which was good. Considering with everything you're dealing with, I was really surprised it got done in that amount of time. Significant internal control issues, we've talked about that, with the lack of pre-audit, the lack of fiscal leadership in previous years, untimely bank reconciliations, I will say a word about that, bank reconciliations really underpin all of your other financial transactions. So until you have those bank recs done 100% reconciled, you don't know for sure what you have in the bank account and what kind of cash you have. And that's true for all units of government, whether you are in financial difficulty or not. All right, it applies to the city of Charlotte, just like it applies to the town of Spring Lake. In fiscal year 19, you were 11% over budget with your over expenditures, in fiscal 2020, it bumped up to 23%. That means almost a quarter of your expenditures were not budgeted. And that's in addition to the appropriation of fund balance that was included in the budget to begin with. Anytime you overspend like that, some, if not all of that money comes out of fund balance in the end. We talked about cash flow being negative in your water sewer fund, and the budget over expenditures there. And finally, the lack of financial reporting to the board, I know that's been a concern, and I know that's something that your current staff is working on. As a board, you cannot make good long-term decisions, or short-term ones for that matter, without current financial information. You have a very daunting task in front of you with the 2122 budget. It is not going to be easy, it's not going to be fun, it's not going to be popular, but you've got to start working towards fiscal stability. And the only way you can do that is to make those hard choices, make those unpopular decisions to get your town back on track financially. And that's really the reason that we are here, to talk about this financial accountability agreement. It's something that we have developed to be a very public process to hold the board accountable for what needs to be done. You are already well on your way of addressing these issues with the current staff that you have, but again, we want this to be a very open and very public process, so we have brought this accountability agreement to you. Susan's going to go through the details, and we're going to ask you as a full board to sign this agreement sometime in the next couple of weeks, and get it back to us. From what I've seen, what this documents really is what you're already doing. I don't think there's a whole lot new here, but again, it puts it in a very public place where your citizens can see it, where we can see it, and everybody will be on the same page as to where we are. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Susan McCullen, the Director of Fiscal Management, and she's going to walk through the agreement with you and what all will be required.
Hi, Sharon.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
I wanted to introduce some of the folks that we have with us. David Irwin. David is a member of our coach team, and he will be, he and some other folks will be the ones that will be working with you as we get into the nuts and bolts of this agreement. And then also Mark Baker, Mark has worked with us, he's actually a board member in a much smaller municipality, but he's also worked, been a county commissioner, and so he has the elected official experience, and so he has been very helpful putting these agreements together. So, I'm going to be talking from this hard copy that you all received. And like Sharon said, this is a draft that we're talking about tonight, you'll get the final document tomorrow. So if you have questions or we need to clarify some stuff, we can make those changes, and then we'll do the final document tomorrow, we'll get that back out to you. I want you to look, before we start talking, at the very last page of this handout. If you haven't already seen it, you're all going to be asked to sign this, the final one, you're going to be asked to sign the final one. Sharon Evanson's going to sign it as Secretary of the Commission, and then y'all are all going to be asked to sign it. It's a public agreement between the LGC and between the town. And right above, on the page right before it, where you'll see Sharon's signature, the consequence for not complying with this document, bearing comply with the requirements of this agreement, may result in the LGC enforcing 159, 181(c), and assuming controls of the financial conditions of the town. What that means is, we come and we go to your bank, and we put our name on your bank cards, and you don't write any more checks. So that's where the town is. And the only reason we're not doing that tonight is because I don't have the staff to do it, because I've got six other units that we're running. And so, I just want you to, I say that because I want you to realize the significance of this agreement. This is not something we do lightly, because we are putting a lot of staff work, investing a lot of state staff time into helping this town of Spring Lake get back on solid fiscal footing. And we want to do that, we love to do that, we love to see towns succeed, and we value our small towns, or we wouldn't be doing the work we do. But I just want you to know, that's where we are, it's that significant. Both Sharon and your auditor, and I wish he had stayed, I really wish he had stayed. But both Sharon and your auditor talked about the difference, the trend, and you looked at some graphs. In 2018, you had cash in your general fund of $2 million. In 19, you had $1.3 million, a $700,000 increase. But you still had $1.3 million decrease, right, a decrease of $700,000. In 2020, you had zero unrestricted cash in your general fund. That means you have no money in your general fund that you can use for operations at that point at June 30th. We have got to get the town on more solid footing. And that's because you were using fund balance year after year after year, and then you overspent year after year after year, 23%. I'll tell you, I've never seen a town, well, maybe not, let me say it a different way, very, very few towns do that. Very, very few towns this size do that. And you really have got to do exactly what you need to do to get that spending under control, and it's going to be tough. So, we're going to send this document out to you tomorrow, we're going to want all members of the governing board, and everyone else that's listed on the back, and Samantha is one of those, so she's agreeing to it as well, and to sign that and get it back to us by May 10th. And we're going to have a process, and I'm going to talk about process. If you'll go over to the second page, you'll see what our goals are for the town, and you've heard a whole lot of them. Our first goal is going to be board training, because y'all are fixing to go into a firestorm. You're going to have to cut budgets like you will not believe, and your citizens are going to be pissed, and they should be. And you're going to have to be able to say no to them at the church or the grocery store, wherever you see them, because what you don't want to do is raise rates, when you've got people that have been paying taxes, and you've got people that have been paying water and sewer. You need to get your financial house in order, and you might need to raise rates, I'm not telling you I'm not going to do that, but I'm telling you that you need to get your financial house in order before you start raising rates and figure it out, you've got to figure that part out first. Just like any household, you've got to live within your means, and y'all have not done that. So our very first goal for y'all is to help y'all, give y'all some tools, so that when your citizens come at you angry, you can support your staff, because what, nobody here will succeed if y'all start telling staff, citizens, yes, we do need to be saying no. So we're going to help you say no. And that's our very first goal, and it's a really important one, and these goals are an order priority. The next goal for you is to hire a permanent, well-qualified manager that meets the qualifications in 168, 147, and can perform the duties that are in the statute 148. That is a statutory job, and you need a manager that can do it. You don't need to slow ball, you need to get a manager that can do what you need them to do, this is not an inconsequential community. And you have got, you are well situated here in Cumberland County to do well fiscally, and a good manager can get you there. You also need a permanent, well-qualified finance officer, and there is, I think Alderman Blant, Sutherland mentions a statute that is going through the General Assembly right now to change your town's charter, so that your finance officer does report to the manager. So that's why we put them in that order. Yes?
Representative Robert Lucas called me this evening. He told me he'd be putting that before them tomorrow morning.
Excellent, good, that's good news, that's good news. We knew it was working its way through, I had seen a draft, but I didn't know where it was in the process. But that's just good structure, that they come to you unified with numbers and policy together that will get you where you need to be. So you need individuals in those positions that can do those positions and can say no to department heads, and can understand the importance of providing reports timely and all of the things that need to happen. Going down, number four, compliance with budget requirements. Everybody's talking about your budgeting practices were not what they needed to be, and so this year, they will be. We're going to work with y'all, we're going to work with Samantha and Nancy, and we're going to, and I'll show you how we're going to do that in a minute. One other thing, we develop a well-thought-out fiscal year 2022 budget that's realistic in both its revenues and the expenditures. We also want to document your staff positions and your salaries, and confirm that those staff positions tie to your budgeted amounts, because I don't think they have in the past. And I think that's, we believe that's what got you into trouble. We want to develop an action plan, this is going to be a multi-year plan that will get you, that will help you begin to figure out how to eliminate your deficit. We do believe that you will have a deficit in your general fund when you finish the current year that you're in. And restore fund balance to the appropriate level. That action plan, this action plan will be reviewed every single month, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Which of y'all are on the audit committee? Okay, all right, okay.
The new audit committee.
The new one, yes.
That you all suggested.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. We've talked about, okay, documenting staff pay levels, salaries, and the salary change approval process. We need to make sure that that's tight, and that you don't get inappropriate salary changes going on. We've talked about bank recons, till I know you're tired of hearing about it, but those need to be brought up to date. And then, as we're getting the records current, then the board needs to then the board needs to begin getting monthly reports, budget and actual cash balances by fund. Let's see, what else? And in the interim, you're gonna be getting some other information such as what, what's the status of the bank recon? So that you know where that work is and being caught up. There's a list on, on item number nine on the second page on what we want you to get every month. So if you go over to page three, this is our process and we, we don't have very many units that we go this depth, this deep into a process with. But we honestly feel like if we don't do this, we'll be back in a year taking your, taking your bank cards. And we don't wanna do that. Okay. And y'all don't want us to do that. Okay. A member, monthly, a member of the town staff and a represent- representative of the governing body. And so it would probably be a good idea if it's somebody, at least one somebody from your audit committee. To meet monthly, and it says or bi-weekly, but at least monthly. And you're gonna meet with the, our coach team members. And we're gonna review the fiscal status and your process on our, on the goals that we just went over. And the, our coach chief's gonna schedule it. There will be information that is required from the town every month by the 15th of each month, starting May 15th. So we're only three weeks out from this first packet of information. And I'm gonna tell you again what, in a minute, what it is. And then once we get this, we're gonna review it. And then we're going to have, we're gonna schedule a follow-up meeting, probably the following week. Sometime May 23rd, something like that. And we're gonna review that and ask questions and then we'll do it again. And every month, we're gonna expect progress. We're gonna expect the, the bank recons to be better. We're gonna be working closely with you on the 2022 budgets and making sure that those are structurally sound the way they need to be. But we will be working with you collaboratively and getting lots of information from, from, from you, from Nancy. So some of it will have to do with your general fund, budget and actuals, trial balances, copies of bank recons, financial reports. We're also gonna be asking for information from your water and sewer, customers, info, customer information, AR balances, an aged accounts receivable balance. We're, we're gonna wanna see a cutoff report and see who actually got cut off on that cutoff report. We may ask to see some of your policies. We may work with you to redo some of your policies. We're also gonna wanna see adjustments that are done every month on your receivables, a long list of stuff. So much that we've actually got a special LGC monitoring email for them to send it all to. So we can make sure we got it. And once we get it, then we'll follow up with our questions. And we'll have routine reports from your monitoring that go to the LGC commission. So if they're not satisfied with the town's progress, then they can pull the trigger and decide to do 181(c) and take over control of the town. And we really, none of us want that to happen. That's not what the town, that's not the best use of the town's resources. It's not the best use of our resources, but we do it when we have to. So I want you to look at this agreement. And if you, does anybody have any questions for me or for Sharon? Or David Irwin, who I introduced you to, will be one of the contacts that you'll have with the coach team, probably the primary one for now. And, but there will be others and there'll be several of us on your monthly meetings. And we'll do them via Zoom so that everybody stays healthy.
I just wanna say thank you. So I gotta say thank you. It's, it's gonna be hard. It's kinda, I mean, it's sad, but in reality, we gotta start somewhere and better, better start now.
Thanks so much. But thank you so much for coming and I really appreciate the classes. But do you have any reading material we could read in the meantime that might prepare us before we, we have the training?
Reading materials. You. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Read, read. Yeah, read the general statute, general statute. You might also spend some time with your financial statements. I would urge you to look at those findings. You had eight material weaknesses. Those are significant internal controls. And that, that probably really helped contribute to you getting here. And so, oh, once we do, once the budget is behind us, that will be a significant point of action too. Well, there will be somebody that needs to spend some time with your budget, with your business processes. And that may be a Nancy thing. It may be Samantha. It may be several of us. But, but you have got some significant business process issues.
Thank you.
And I wanna tell you something else. There's a employee that's got $9,000 in their bank account. And I don't know if that person's still here or not, but I would start a payment plan. Cause I don't know. Huh? I'd take that money back. And then those folks that have 15,000 missing credit card receipts, I would cut them off. I'd take those credit cards. Are there, do you know who the employees are that have those cards?
So town issued credit cards, individual employees no longer have town issued credit cards. They stay in the finance office. And you have to say a lot of paper saying exactly what you're going to buy. And then there's approximately four or five signatures on that paper before a credit card is even released.
Cards have been gone or gone. Okay, cool. Okay. Just saying. Anything else?
Yeah, Alderman Cooper, then Jackson, then Alderman Southern. Oh, okay. Cooper, then Alderman Southern.
Um, thank you.
Okay.
I, I heard Mayor Fontaine asked about training. There, yeah, GS 159 is good, but I believe there is a recording of, of some webinars that you all gave. And also the league had one from the last, the city vision last week. That's a good place to start. And also there's some upcoming training. I'm not sure if the school government's doing it, but they also have great articles.
Yeah, yeah, they do. The school government's a great resource.
Right.
Yeah. And they've got some really good blog posts about how to handle things. Yes.
But there may be some recordings. I took a recent class with Ms. Edmondson a few months ago. Uh, so that might be, have a recording out there as well.
Yeah. And, and there's, there are, there are a lot of, you have several different places that will do training. And we are not, we're not sure what we're gonna do. We, we want to make sure that it's something that meets your needs. Cause we, so we've got some, we gotta think about some things we can put together. We may come back to a, another meeting. We may do a budget, you know, come to one of your budget workshops. We gotta figure out with, with Samantha and Nancy what we can do. But we'll, we'll be in touch about that.
First of all, I wanna thank you all for coming out, David, as well as everybody to, uh, and I think the citizens need to know, they're taxpayers, they've been here for a long time. It is public record.
It is.
We've had a difficult time with the public record requests, with individuals requesting. Some individuals that was in place stated that they couldn't get them. But by law, it's public record. So again, I want to thank you all for your time. But with that $10,000 that our employee has, um, my background is finance. And normally anything over 10,000 could be considered as a federal, uh, law and could be criminal. So just to say, and if it was bank reconciliation as well as proper accountability for record keeping, we would know.
That's true. That's true.
But when you don't, you don't know. But I'm pretty sure Nancy him about to get ready to find out.
And, and I don't, I, I, I probably shouldn't have even said that because y'all got much, much bigger issues.
We do, but we still need that money back because.
You still need that money back. You do.
Integrity goes a long way.
Integrity goes a long way.
But if you continue to follow in the same direction, and I always say, if you keep doing the same old thing, you get the same old result and that's what showing in these finances.
That's what's showing here is.
Exactly.
Year after year, the same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And we need to change it.
So I just wanted to say with that amount and as well as finance and budgeted, Ms. Woods had presented one about a month ago and I took that one online. As well as this one that they're offering is gonna be April the 30th. And what it's saying, if any elected officials have not taken that, it is required that you take it this year. So we might be looking into that, please Samantha.
Who is that? Is that with the league?
Yeah, that's with the league.
Okay, okay.
And it's gonna be offered April the 30th.
Is ethics then or something?
Uh-huh. And it's with finance and budgeting as well that it's required.
Okay.
But anyway, thank you and I'll be, look forward to working with you all. Because I believe in being a good steward for taxpayer dollars.
Absolutely.
And ever since I've served on this board, I've stated that.
Yeah.
And I've been standing on one for a long time. But with your directions as a board, hopefully we can, I don't know how long it's gonna take. But we got you all involved and we're starting to get in the right direction with the proper people.
It will take a while. I mean, you got.
It's gonna take a while.
You got into this, um, you heard, you heard your auditor over the last five years, it sounded like. So it's, and it may have been longer than that, but it's been five years. He had numbers over five years. So it's gonna be a multi-year process. It's not gonna be one year. But, but we expect that we'll see, we should see progress.
And I wanna thank our attorney because with that land acquisition and Mr. Kristen coming together to get us on the right track and that 501(c)(3) or whatever, since I've served on the board, I've never had any dealings with anything separate from the budgeting and fund balance. So that's totally something separate. But I do wanna thank our attorney. We have met to sort of process to try to get that payment made. Because once you don't have credibility with your finance, banking for municipality, it's embarrassing. It's just shameful. So I do wanna thank our attorney for, and Ms. Samantha. And we've met trying to get that straight as well, cause he, Mr. Kristen did state that.
I, I, I would, I would be worried about that.
Right.
I would be worried about that. I think that the advice that, that Sharon Edmondson gave you was prudent to look at, at trying to refinance that or work an agreement out with the bank. And I just.
I think it's what the attorney has stated.
We've already been in touch with the lender, their own notice as to what the issue is. They understand the legal obligation from our perspective. So we've already gone through that analysis with them and now just finding out the best way to work it out.
Okay. I'll give you.
I also wanna say thank you. And I appreciate y'all coming down with your team. Back in 2015, we had a young man here. When he was, we were young, he was about my age. And, uh, he was a board member, previously a town manager who spent quite a bit of time in our finance department. And partially because the board was responsible for finance.
Right.
Well, he passed away in 2015. And if you look at everything that you're seeing and everything that we're dealing with, you can see where we started going down track. For a while now, we're trying to get this put underneath the town manager. But it's just recently I was able to hand a paper over, work over to Marvin Lucas and they're trying to get that taken care of. But one other thing, I, I would like you to press upon this board is that Christmas time or this time of the year, what we do not do is say no disconnects and things of that nature there. Because this board has got to run this like a business. And if they don't run it like a business, then you find yourself in situations that we're in right now. Thank you.
Well, you're, you're, you're absolutely right. I think that we all saw once, once, once that the governor's order went in during COVID, how, how difficult it was to dig out of that hole with payment plans and, and some of those sorts of things. You can, you can collect the utilities billing that you need to collect and still be fair to the people that are behind. You can do payment plans with them. There are ways to do that and be fair to citizens without excusing them for not paying their bills. And people, people have, I mean, there are lots of units will do payment plans when, when people hit times. I mean, sometimes you just can't pay your bills. You're out of work or, or whatever. So we, you, what we advise units to do is to have a, a well-developed water and sewer collections policy and follow it. Let the staff administer and the board stay out of it. So y'all have to say no when somebody comes to you and the grocery store says, I can't pay my bill. You're like, go see Nancy or whoever the future Nancy is. You've got to keep the board out of it and let staff deal with it and support staff in that. And if you don't, you can undermine them really quickly.
You know.
And it's important that y'all just stay out of that day to day and let the staff do it. Do a good policy that's fair and then get out of it.
I watched us sit here and turn around and say, well, when, not gonna cut water off. But yet all day long, there was lines out there. But I don't know how the work got out so fast, cause the very next day, there were no lines. You understand what I'm saying?
No, sir. I didn't hear what you said.
What I'm trying to say is the people were paying until we said, you, uh, water is not gonna be cut off.
Yeah.
But the minute we said that, the lines went away.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, yeah, we've heard, we've, we've heard that other places. And some of that was, you saw the dip the economy did. And so, you know, that was probably necessary. But we're, we're beginning to come out of that now. It looks like units are doing, like I said, they're doing payment plans and they're recovering some of that. But I'll tell you, your days, this is a metric that we look at. And this is not just COVID. Your, your water and sewer, and I'm not gonna be able to read it, cause it, my, this, okay. Your water and sewer days sales and receivables. So the number of days of bills that you had in your receivables. And it's just, the only way this metric is useful is to see a trend. In 18, your water and sewer had 54 days of billing in it. In 18, in 19, it had 56 days of billing in the receivable. So the receivable was a sort of flat, 54, 56. In 2020, it had 103 days. So some of COVID might have impacted that. Uh, you, but that's not all COVID. Cause you only had three months of COVID in 2020. So I, I, you, it, it. In twenty-twenty. So I, I, you, it, 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 it may have impacted it some, but I, I, I just, I think that you had more issues going on in twenty-twenty. And some of that is, uh, you, you, you were struggling with a finance officer. Um, you, you had interim finance officer. You didn't have that role filled. So you need a strong finance officer to do that collection and do it well.
We, uh, we thank you. Uh, so happy for you to have the last word, and thank you, um, Ms. Edmondson, McCullin, Irvin, and Baker.
Yeah.
It is uh.
You got it.
Dog out there, and uh, we don't want you all traveling all the way back home at, at midnight, but we thank you. Oh, I'm the one speaking. You're looking over at somebody. I don't know who you're looking at, but.
Oh, I thought, I thought you was, okay, I thought he was speaking. Okay. I can't tell without the map.
That's, that's, that's quite all right.
I'm sorry. I apologize, ma'am.
It's, it's no, it's no problem at all. I just want you to have the last word, because uh, you all have been encouraging to us, and you have laid it out, and you have put it down. As somebody used to say, well, the goats can get it. You know what I'm saying?
I know.
And now, and now, if we don't feed on that, we need to perish.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Well, we, we wish you well. I mean, we really want to see the town succeed.
And, and thank you for your hard work and, and your, and your encouragement.
Okay.
You all travel safely. We don't want to keep you here until twelve o'clock tonight.
Okay. We're gonna send you that final document tomorrow. If we don't hear from you, we're assuming that y'all are okay with it, that y'all are all gonna sign it.
We'll, we'll review it when you send it.
Okay.
Wait, what's that? We will review it when they send it. We haven't seen the documents.
The final.
Unless you wanna sign something that you haven't read.
They, they, they have a copy. They have a copy. But I know you haven't sent it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Uh, travel safely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. We'll be in touch.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Walters, I thought I saw her come in. Okay. Uh, this is transitioned, so you can get, you can stretch out, adjust the mic. And um, we will work right on through our water break.
You wanna clean the mic? I got some uh stuff, just gotta get it. You can use that in the, you, you got it?
I'll get it.
You got some white, yeah. Normally we clean it out. Thank you.
You're gonna be able to see exactly where he's proposing these lots. Now, Mr. Blakely has indicated to me that he's talked with Rulak, and that Rulak has asked him to show on certain things where his lots are gonna be in relation to their, like, noise field and their imaginary area and stuff like that. So I would expect to see that when he turns in things to me. Um, if not, then I'll be talking with Rulak and seeing what they actually asked him for. Um, but he should be getting us that information to be presented to the board, to the planning board in June, and then to you guys in July.
Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no more, or to a more restrictive zoning district located at sixteen hundred Hinkle Street. All right, I'm gonna go through the uh presentation real quick. All right, this is just a sketch map of the area. The subject property is outlined in red and hatch marked in the center. This is an aerial view of the property. You can see that the Fort Bragg Reservation borders it to, looks like the east, maybe? I'm not sure of the orientation of this map. Um, you see the uh land use in the area? Uh, yellow being single family, yellow with the hatch marks throughout being manufactured homes, the orangish color multifamily residential, and the blue institutional. Next one. This is an aerial view with the zoning layer overlaid on it, and it's currently zoned R five A, R six A to the north, to the south, some, some more R five A to the south, and CP along uh Lillington Highway. Next one. Spring Lake water and sewer already serves the property. Hard rock soils are not a factor in this case. Next one. Uh, the Spring Lake land use plan calls for a medium-density residential, which allows for six point one to fifteen units per acre. Requires public water and sewer. Uh, this request is plan compliant. R six A is in the medium-density residential definition in the land use plan. So the plan, uh, the request is compliant with the Spring Lake land use plan. Next one. And then these are just pictures of the subject property. From McCormick Road. Next. This is the north view down McCormick Road. East view from McCormick Road. South view from McCormick Road, and you can see the uh posting sign there in the bottom corner. All right, so staff recommended approval, uh, planning board recommended approval, six to nothing um of the request. And so now, I just, I'm here to answer any questions, and then once the board is ready to make, uh, to make a motion either approval or deny.
Alden McGarrett.
Thank you. I think I'm on page uh twenty-eight for the board. Um, you did state that it would be a more restricted zoning district? We on uh P twenty-one dash eighteen?
Oh, it says, "Or to a more restrictive zoning district." That's language that we put in every heading for our zoning cases um that allows for something to go even more restrictive if it's agreed upon between the board and the property owner. That way, we don't have to come in, and if the board says, "Well, we want this," and the property owner says, "Yeah, okay, I'm good with that." We don't have to pull the case, come back with a whole new case, because it's already written in there that you could do a more restrictive zoning district.
Uh, the potential action with the motion. This one is already stated in here. So on page twenty-nine, uh, it says uh designation and allow for six point one to sixteen units per acre, uh acre is required. So with the fifteen units, it's gonna be an acre of land?
Yeah, um. Could you go back to the one that talks about the land use plan? It should be down towards. Keep going. Should be right there before the picture starts.
Well, it says required.
Yes, that one. Public water and sewer is required, not the density. The public water and sewer has to be present for you to be, for you to get this, to get any property rezoned to this zoning designation now.
The medium uh density of residential designation allows for six point one to fifteen units.
Yes, ma'am.
And then it says per acre.
Right.
Okay. And required a public water and sewer.
That's right.
So my question is, is it gonna be um an acre of land with these units?
The property currently has manufactured home park on it.
Right.
It is the intention of the property owner who just bought this piece of land, if, if I'm understanding correctly from him, um, to keep the mode manufactured home park there and to possibly extend it, or expand it. Um, not outside of the ten acres that was already being used for the park. But spots that had been, um, trailers had been removed. Um, he would now be able to go and put them back in. He can't now, because in two thousand nine, I believe, the former property owner came in, rezoned it to R five A thinking to maybe sell it or develop it. That fell through. So this manufactured home park is non-conforming, and this rezoning would fix that non-conformity.
Oh, okay. 'Cause I know his, his unit's already there, so.
Right, right. He would be held to manufactured home park standards. Um, he's not, it, you know, coming in with anything right now to do any type of subdivision. So um, if I remember right, I think it's eight manufactured homes per acre is the limit for manufactured home park. Um, he hasn't ca, any, before he could put anything on that property, because we don't have an existing manufactured home park plan on it, 'cause it's such an old park, he would have to go through the manufactured home park review first.
Now, don't they have to be a certain age now? I mean, those were older.
Right, right.
But he has to put them, if he's gonna add uh other ones, there's a certain uh age of those that you have to have put in.
I think, I think the statute says, or the ordinance says seventy-four or newer. Um, but I'd have to go look. But there is a date that it has to be created by to be a certain class of manufactured home. Um, and I would have to go look at the ordinance before I give you a, a solid answer on that one.
Can you please do that? 'Cause we wanna make sure we have standards, and we're making sure we wanna go up and not uh down. And that's with any uh of our manufacturer, uh, because we have some existing.
Right.
That's standing, that some are not living in livable.
Well, at the time that this one was created, there were no standards essentially. There, there wasn't really an ordinance. Um, now, it would have to meet today's standards. It would have to have, you know, whatever, you know, y'all's public water and sewer utilities, you know, require then, before they can hook on any additional. Um, they would have to meet whatever today's ordinance states. Um, it's not like they can go back and just do whatever they did when they went in there in the seventies.
Okay, so since you said you didn't know, and you'll get back with us, but you asked him for action on this tonight, so wouldn't it be required that he wouldn't move since he has some land, and he's gonna move some more behind? How would we know if he's gonna be with the standards of the date of those manufactured homes?
Well, he has to come in, well, I say, he has to come in, normally what happens is they have to come into an inspections department and get a permit to move a home onto a property. And at that time, they have to give you the information usually, you know, 'cause manufactured homes are almost considered like vehicles. They have VIN numbers.
Right.
So you have to give them the VIN, and you have to give them the year, the make, the model of, of the home. So that's usually when you catch that. But he has to go through this manufactured home park review first. The park is existing. Before he can expand it, you know, it's there. He can't, you know, you can't make him go anywhere. He's there. Um, whether or not he's on board or not, since it was legal at one point. In order for him to expand it, he would have to go through the review, which if I remember correctly, has to come before the board for approval. So it's, this is not approval of his manufactured home park. This is just getting his zoning to R six A, because his wish is to expand the manufactured home park. But that has to come back before you guys. This is not you rubber stamping him to, you know, go put homes out there tomorrow. He can't do that.
Okay, 'cause I was reading that in, in the action and what it says here. So he would have to come back before.
Correct.
Review board. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alden McGarrett, and then uh Ms. Willen Weaver.
A manufactured home park review.
To do two to what?
To get approval to put any new lots, or any new homes in that lot. Are you a swan?
Yeah.
Okay. I have.
The rezoning allows you to bring home.
The rezoning allows you to go through the manufactured home park review. You can't just go out tomorrow and put a home out there. You have to go through the proper review. So we have to do this first, and then you can come in and do the review. Okay?
And on two ten, correct?
I'm sorry.
This property's two ten. That's what we're just talking about.
Off of Lillington Highway?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But it's, it's closer.
It's closer to McCormick.
It's closer to McCormick.
It's off of McCormick and um.
Right.
Another piece is between it and two ten. So it doesn't have direct access to two ten. And it's not gonna be, you know, asking, that I know of, for another entrance. That would be something DOT would have to, he would have to deal with DOT for that.
Okay.
Alden McGarrett, and then uh Ms. Willen Weaver.
Uh, yes. Uh, I guess this property hasn't been fully operational since uh, what, two thousand and six, uh, non-conforming?
Since the rezoning, yes, sir.
Right. Uh, I'm wondering about water lines and sewage lines. Uh, how would that affect this property?
It would be on to, it would be responsibility owner to work with the town to make sure that what's there can service new units. Um, without, without the approval of the town, that they would serve those units. Like, say, if they don't have the capacity for water or sewer, you can't get a permit to put a home out there.
Wouldn't you do that prior?
You have to do, before you can put a home out there, you, in the county, I'm not exactly sure how it works with y'all's inspections department. At the county's inspections department, when you come in to get your permit to move a home out to a lot, a manufactured home, you have to have approval from whatever entity is going to be giving you the water or sewer. If you don't have that before you come in to get your permit to move, you're not getting it.
Right.
So you would need those before any homes could actually be moved out. You have to be able to, you know, make sure with the town that those could be served. Okay?
Just for clarification, and Jamie, you actually clarified it earlier, but this is just the rezoning. So um, it's the rezoning of a full ten point zero one acres plus or minus. Any use allowed in R six A would be allowed here um through the proper process, permitted, conditional, or special use. Um, and. Um, and then, then again, this is just the rezoning. Any further development of the property will have to go through a further review. That would be, um, subject to this board and we will work with the county planning department to go through those processes.
Thank you, I'm just reading the documentation that's included in here.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, and that's what is stated for me to ask these questions to you.
Yes ma'am.
So thank you.
We need a motion from the board? All right, woman Cooper.
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve case P twenty-one dash eighteen. Rezoning of ten point oh one acres from R five A residential to R six A residential. Or to a more restrictive zoning district located at sixteen hundred Hinkle Street.
Uh, Mayor Don?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Um, this was noted as, as a public hearing, so we've only heard from the county planning staff, so we will now need to hear from the applicant. And then anybody who is, um, here to speak for or against the rezoning. And then we, um, would be able to have for discussion and entertain a motion, please. Since this is noted as a public hearing.
And the owner, Mr. White, is here.
I appreciate your time, I'm Cory White, relatively new to the area. Um, feel pretty committed to the area, moved to the area after investing pretty significantly in a couple of real estate perimeter projects here and committed already to turning those properties around. The one we're speaking specifically of, what the rezoning is allowing me to do, or what it allow us to do, is to better take care of the community and to provide more affordable housing to an area that undoubtedly needs more affordable housing. Um, I don't really have a detailed argument or financial list of why you should go about approving it. But rationally speaking, there is no rational reason not to, because this property is functioning as a mobile home park. Property's been disrepair for twenty years. Did you see the pictures that you put up there? It's embarrassing as the owner to sell that, but having only owned it for three weeks, I know that in a month it'll look much better than that. But the only way it can continue to look better than that is if the property is allowed to generate the income that allows it to take care of the people who take care of the other people. And without that, it'll be in disrepair. So when you drive around and you see mobile home parks in disrepair, it's not a statement about the people who live in the mobile home park. It's a statement about the people who own the land. Land is represented, is representative of the people who own it. So when you see it trashy and you see it run down and you see trees that haven't been cut in twenty years, it doesn't have anything to do with the lower and impoverished people who are living there. It has every single thing to do with the person owning the land. And I promise you, if you allow me to, I will fix the land. But if I'm not allowed to, then it can't happen.
Okay.
Is there anyone to speak for or against?
So I wanted to speak, um, actually, uh, my husband just met with Mr. White, um, over the last couple of weeks. Um, and he is coming to the area to clean up the property. He actually hired out one of our companies, um, to come in and do professional landscaping, um, take down the trees. I do not know he would be here today, but after speaking with him and looking at what he specifically asked us to go to the property to do, I do feel like he'll be valuing our community by, um, coming in. Like I said, he's already started, uh, being the owner of three weeks and he's had a couple of properties that he had. And Hinkle Street, when I saw it on the agenda, I did wanna speak to that because, um, he asked us to come out and give him an actual, um, estimate. Um, he has agreed and we provided what he needed from us for insurance and, um, servicing purposes. And, um, he did go into, to do a contract with us to get those properties taken care of. So I just wanted to speak on his behalf. I, I have seen, um, that he is active with trying to turn these properties around. That's all I have.
The motion on the floor.
Okay, you voted to put, hold on, hold, hold on, yes. Is there anyone else to speak for or against this, um, rezoning? Is there anyone to speak for or against? All right, woman Sullivan.
Oh, no, I'm just ready when you're ready.
Okay, let me see.
Yeah, I just, sometimes I make them.
Okay, I'll, if you turn that off, please. For the third time, is there anyone for or against this request? Here, uh, we'll entertain a motion to close this section of the public hearing. All right, no, Garrett.
Make motion to reclose the public hearing.
All right, woman Sullivan.
I think that was me.
Okay, all right, woman Cooper.
I second that motion for this public hearing.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, sign of nay? Now, that was Mayor program. Now we will entertain a motion to approve or deny. All right, woman Sullivan, I think she's on.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve case P twenty-one eighteen of the rezoning.
All right, woman Cooper.
I second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, sign of nay? Uh, it's had it. All right. The motion passes. Welcome to the community, sir.
Thank you, feel welcome.
All right.
I apologize if I was, I'm emotional, darling.
You're good, sir. Okay, back to Mrs. Walters.
All right. Next case is twenty-one dash zero three-two, this is not a public hearing item. Um, consideration of R West Investments property, uh, request for a subdivision and group development review. This does fall under both the Spring Lake zoning and subdivision ordinance. It's zoned R six. Total acreage is point five one plus or minus acres and it's located at the corner of Scarborough and Mitchley Street. Just a second, I think. I think I've got some.
Question. This is like one piece of land that we're trying to break into four pieces?
That's, uh, into three pieces.
Three pieces.
It's, it currently is one piece of land with four homes on it. Um, the developers want to take that one piece and cut it into three pieces. Two of them will have one home each and one of those will have two of the homes. So that's why it's a subdivision review and a group development review. We allow in both the county and in the town of Spring Lake, uh, what's called a group development. So you can have more than one primary, I'm sorry, you can have more than one primary structure on a lot. So you can have more than one home on a lot, so long as you have enough acreage for it. And it's just so happens that with this subdivision, he didn't have enough acreage to do four lots, but he did have three because you just need enough acre, enough density for one and a half to keep them onto one lot.
So he's probably gonna to sell his property and.
I'm not sure if he's going to sell them. He, I mean, you know, you certainly can or can use them as rentals. We don't get into how he's going to use the properties. Um, from my understanding, the homes are staying, but also I've had very little interaction with the actual owner. I've dealt with, um, Mr. Haddock, who's been his surveyor and who submitted the case for.
Thank you for explaining it to him.
No problem. Okay, so what you see on the screen is an aerial view of the subject property. It's outlined in blue. Next slide. Can you do the next one? And then this is a copy of the preliminary plot where you can see, he's located the homes on the property so he can make sure it meets all the setbacks for the district, um, which it does. It meets all ordinance related standards. Um, there we go. You can see there will be three lots, two with one home each, one with two homes. Um, the dimensions of the homes are there as well as the square footage and the acreage of each lot. Um, so I'm available for any questions before you guys decide to make a motion.
All right, woman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Originally, kinda hurried this before, it was four. But it's on one lot.
Right.
Right, for three. Right?
We're going from one lot to three lots, yes ma'am.
Okay. And if you look at, um, it says one lot on page, uh, thirty-six. The owner is requesting approval of subdivision of group development for three lots with one lot containing two dwellings.
Yes ma'am.
What does that mean?
The middle lot has two homes on it. We consider, we call those dwellings, so each is, one is a dwelling unit.
Right.
So he's asking for three lots, but out of those three, one of those lots is gonna have two homes instead of the one. Because he did that, that's why there's the group development language in there. You have to get approval to have more than one home on a lot. So I was just letting the board know that this is what you're looking at. You're looking at the subdivision of one lot into three and also the approval of the two homes on the, on lot number two.
Okay, and I think you stated that, um, he may keep those existing homes that's already on the lot?
He may, but I've, I've not talked with the property owner, so I do not know what his future, uh, plans are. Um, he cannot get any more homes than the, what are there now. Um, even if he tears one down and rebuilds one in the exact same place, he's only getting the one on those lots and the two on the, those lots. There's not enough acreage for him to do any more than what's already being shown right now.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
All right, woman Cooper.
Thank you. So they own all of this and they just wanna break it up like this. Is that what, what they're doing?
From my understanding, yes ma'am.
But it's one home now.
Right now, yes ma'am, because it's all on one piece of property. And he can't legally sell any of those pieces of land. Now, the homes, that's another thing, but the land underneath it, he can't divide it up without going through the plot process and without going through the subdivision process. Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, uh, this is a question for clarity. Now, this is not listed for as a public hearing notice.
That's right, this is not a public hearing item.
So, so then we just simply now need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but without, is there a motion? All right, no, Garrett.
I wanna make a motion that we approve case twenty-one oh three-two.
All right, woman Jackson.
I second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded to approve case twenty-one dash zero three-two. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, either sign of nay? I have it.
Thank you, you guys have the mic.
Thank you.
We move to item nine C. I'm sorry, Chief Will.
Uh, good afternoon, board, board and mayor. Um, one of the things we're doing, I actually had sent, uh, her a picture of the fire truck. I believe y'all have it in the, in your thing. I, I had messed it up and it wouldn't, I never heard, that's my fault. But one of the things we'd like to do is, um, coming for you today so we can sell the two thousand and three, uh, HME fire truck that we have. So, um, one of the things about it is it's got over eighty thousand miles on it. It's, uh, it costs anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars a year for maintenance. It's gonna cost, so we're trying to work on some of the budgets, knock some of that number down. So one of the things we thought about, the ones, go ahead and sell this fire truck. Um, and if we could, we could use the money to outfit the, uh, second fire station. So it wouldn't cost the town any more money on that end of it. And so whatever money you get out of it, we can, we can do that end of it. Um, that's about it that I know of. So I just need to see if I can sell this. Put it along the go-deals.
Um, okay, all right, woman Sullivan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the sale of the twenty oh three HME fire truck.
All right, woman Cooper.
I second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the sale of this two thousand and three HME fire truck. All in favor?
Unreadened.
Unreadened, yes, sir. All right, all right, no, Garrett.
I'm kinda curious, when did we decide that we were gonna get rid of this truck?
Just in, in the last probably month or so. Um, we were, we were talking about where we could save some money, uh, working on the budget.
Would we have saved money if we would have bought one new truck versus two new trucks?
Would you, of course you could save money.
Yeah, but it's hard for me to understand that we get away to sell the truck and we just went in the hole. And now we're gonna turn around and sell the truck that's operational. Uh, you say it's costing us about eight thousand a year to operate this truck. Is that eight thousand in fuel, tires?
It's actually just maintenance.
Maintenance.
Yes, sir.
And what's it cost us to operate a normal truck?
The new ones?
No, the other ones that we had.
Um, anywhere, that's actually the higher ones. Um, most of them, the eleven we have, it costs us about four thousand to, to maintain. Ladder truck's a lot more because it's a ladder truck, but it's twenty years old. Uh, rescue's twenty-one years old. Um, it costs us a little bit more money. Um, I'm just trying to bring some money back into the, to the town.
Uh, my question is, it's eighty-two thousand miles. As they say in, in my neck of the woods, a car with eighty-two thousand miles is not even broken in.
It is on a fire truck. We ride them things pretty hard. I mean, yeah, they're, they're, they're going poor pretty hard and, you know, that, that's usually, that's usually wore out pretty good. You know, a fire truck, you get about fifteen years out of it if you've done something. Before this one cost us any more in maintenance, we were looking to say, hey, let's go ahead and get rid of this one and, and save some money. Because the new trucks, they've got a seven tier, uh, seven year bumper to bumper warranty on them that we don't have to worry about.
You know, it, it, uh, it kinda shocked me that we just pop up now and get rid of this truck. Uh, you heard all the financial problems that we're having here in town at the present time.
Yes, sir.
And, uh. How many trucks do we have out there?
Uh, we have, uh, on engine wise?
Uh, fire trucks, period.
Okay, well, we have one ladder truck, we have a rescue truck, and right now we have, with the two new ones, we have four engines. That's why we're, that's why we're getting rid of the old ones.
So we have how many trucks?
Altogether?
Altogether.
Six.
So we have six trucks altogether. How many do we need at this location?
We'll need, we have to keep, uh, two engines and a ladder truck here.
Okay, how many will we have together?
We're gonna put a rescue and an engine out there.
So then we'd be back down to five trucks.
That's right.
Okay, so instead of buying two trucks, we could have kept this truck with eighty-some thousand miles on it.
That, yeah, I mean, there's possibility. You, you, I mean, I hate to be it that way, but you approved me buying two fire trucks.
We approved it.
I brought it through the board and y'all said, yes, buy two fire trucks.
Yes, so that means that now we have to pay a little bit more attention to what you tell us.
One hundred percent, sir. I agree with you one hundred percent.
Alright.
And I, I understand that we are in a, a budget crunch and that's why my, you know, the whole thing is about is to get rid of this fire truck.
And how much we ask for the fire trucks?
Uh, what to put it on there, that is, I mean, it's not gonna go for much, it'd probably go for thirty, forty thousand dollars maybe. We've, we've went and looked back at the ones that sold.
And how much is it gonna cost to re, uh, redo the new fire station?
Uh, whatever I get out of this fire truck, that's all I get. I'm not getting any more money. Young lady right there said so. She said, whatever you get, so you get. So you better do a good job selling it.
So this is already been established?
Sir?
This has already been established, don't you?
Um, Chief Williams brought this before myself and Nancy, something with the finances about surplusing this vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and through the budget process and beginning, uh, after July one, what we, we'll be doing. Um, and through the budget process and beginning, uh, after July one, what we, we'll be doing a fleet assessment and a facilities assessment on, um, that's, so that is looking into all the town buildings and then all of the vehicles that the town has in their possession that we own outright. We do have some that are not being used, so we need to surplus items that we are not using so the town can, um, recoup some funds from those items. So, Mr., um, Chief Williams, he did bring this before us and discuss the, the life of a fire truck. Um, and then he felt in his professional opinion that it was time to get rid of it. If the board would like further information on the average lifespan of a fire truck, average miles of when they are disposed of and surplus, I'll be happy to bring that information back to you at the next meeting. Uh, but that, that is at the pleasure of the board.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I, I think, I think Alderman Jackson first and then Alderman Sutton.
Um, I, I'm sorry.
Well, I was looking at you right here. Okay, well, I don't know who wrong here first. I was looking at the reflection here.
I'm through.
Okay, so Jackson then, uh, Cooper. Okay, okay, correct. Alderman Jackson, Alderman Sutton, Alderman Cooper, in that order.
Chief Williams, you, you're taking the money, um, if allowed, to sell the truck to put into the second fire station?
Right, that, that's correct. We have, there's no furniture in there. I mean, with no furniture at all. So if we get this up and, and ready in two months, um, there'll be no furniture in there at all, no desks, no beds, no nothing. That was never put in on the, um, money to build it.
How were you planning on putting that in there anyway, from the beginning, when the, when we approved the value of the fire trace? How, how were you going to, how were you going to, um, equip the, the fire, the new fire station?
Well, a lot of that should, well, when I figured it up, it should have come out of Manchester funds. Um, but Manchester funds is, uh, no longer there.
Hmm, what happened to it?
Uh, that's, that's y'all's decision, not mine. Um, again, that's kind of what, I don't, I don't know what happened to it. Just like there's a lot of things, we don't have no idea what happened to a lot of money in this town, this is kind of the same way.
Well, I think we know what happened to the money in the time we overbudgeted. They just said that through the meeting that we just had, that money was over, things was overbudgeted, that we didn't budget. Instead, nobody in, in the meeting at all, not even the auditor, not even the, the LCG made any reference that nobody knows where the money is. They know what happened. We overbudgeted. We're buying stuff that we didn't have money for. So we want to make sure we clear that of, there's, there's too many rumors around here that the money is here and there. We know where the money come from. The money came from us approving the fire trucks that we didn't have money for, approving other things that we didn't have money for. So we know where the money went. We, 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 we said yes to stuff that we didn't have to. So my, my thing is if you're having, if you were thinking about the fire station, the new one, then somewhere in there, it should have been a plan implemented on how you were going to pay for the, the beds and things of that, of that nature. Because I'm thinking if we sell this fire truck, then why not can we take that money and put toward the bill that we have for the fire trucks?
You, you could, you could definitely do that. Um, I'm just trying to figure out how to put furniture in a fire station.
So that, but though when you say furniture, you're talking about, because like, and you helped me to remember. Because I think when you gave me the tour, because they have individuals where they stay over.
That's correct. It's going to be, it's going to be the same way. They have to sleep down there, they have to eat down there, we have to be able, I mean.
So you got to have the same structure that you have here, you have to have there.
Yes, ma'am.
Got you. All right, thank you.
But that, that's what, when we first started the whole plan, it was supposed to, uh, there was supposed to be money put aside for. Uh, blame it on me, I didn't check that very well. Uh, that's on me.
And the Manchester money, that's the money that really came from downtown, right?
It comes from the county, yes, ma'am.
And the county, so some, so if we don't have it, I mean, that means the county didn't do something.
No, ma'am. We, we've gotten the checks from the county.
You got the checks from the county?
The town has, yes, ma'am.
So, so we didn't tie the checks that we got from the county to?
That, uh, again, that's, that's, uh, that's something that, um.
I want to know where that money went to.
You could, that's, yeah, that's another.
That, that's because if the county gave the fire department money to use for the fire station, then why aren't we using that money that the county gave to them for the fire station?
It, it technically don't, it goes to general fund. Again, same thing. Uh, it's, it's Manchester set up for that, for Manchester. It comes in Manchester. I don't want to get too much into this. Uh, but it does, it's.
You explain that to me later?
Yes, ma'am. We will be, um, explaining at our May eighteenth budget meeting with the board, our budget work session, we will be explaining the different revenues and expenditures, how they relate. Um, that's just one of many, many topics we'll cover that day, but I'll be happy to look into that and provide an answer before May eighteenth.
Because if they gave them money to do the fire station, then he shouldn't be asking for money. He should have money. If Manchester gave it to him, if the county gave it to him, right? I mean, I mean, I'm looking at that wrong. Because if, if, if they proved money for us to, to build this fire station here and to do something, then we should be able to use that money that they gave us for just that purpose.
Yes, ma'am. We're looking into, so the fire station there is a loan for that. Um, and then the Manchester, I believe, Chief Williams, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is the additional, um, revenue that the county was going to give to us to support that fire station, correct?
You just said we got that, right?
That is correct. We, we have been getting the, uh, for the last two years, we've gotten the extra seventy-five thousand to help build this.
So where is that money at? I mean, if we're going to go back to, that's another thing then. We're, we're saying now, we're going to take money from a fire truck that we're going to sell to put to a fire station when we're already supposed to have seventy-five thousand dollars to go to the fire station. So where is that money at?
So the cost to build the fire station, man the fire station, operation and maintenance on the fire station, the fire trucks, personnel, um, paper clips, everything like that costs more, way more than seventy-five thousand dollars. So while you may get a certain amount of income from the county and we haven't, I don't know exactly where that line on you're talking about is. That's one of the things Nancy and I are working on, is where these revenues are going to and how they're being allocated. Um, so once we get that answer, you'll find that in the budget meeting, because that's something we're looking into as well. But the revenue sources, they don't cover the full operational costs.
Okay, I want to, I, I don't know about the other board members, but I want to see, because I'm still not understanding, I, I, and I must be stuck on stupid or something. I'm still not understanding if, if Manchester gave us money for the fire trucks, then why isn't Manchester money directed to the fire truck? So basically what you're telling me is that the cost of the fire station and everything exceeded what we said it would be. In other words, if, if we said the cost of the fire truck station was two hundred thousand dollars, then it must have exceeded the two hundred thousand dollars. So now because we need more money. I'm not understanding. It, it, it may cost over seventy-five thousand, but what was budgeted, you know, where, where is all of that at? Because if not, we're doing the same thing that we just sat here and was told not to do, doing stuff that we don't know what we're doing. So I need to know, where is that money, that Manchester money? If it's come, seventy-five thousand dollars came in from Manchester, where is it at? Where did it go to? Who spent it? That's what I want to know.
Absolutely. I was not here when any of these things were done, so we are trying to pull records, look at the contracts, look at the tax agreements, and see where those funds are and how they're going to be allocated. But just for general knowledge of, of everyone here, there are not very many departments that actually do support themselves. And as you could see, none of the town's departments have been supporting themselves. Generally, water and sewer, they should be, but most departments do not have a revenue stream that would support their full expenditure.
That's irrelevant to me right now. What I want to know is where the money at. Because if he wants to sell the fire truck and we don't need it, then sell it, no big deal. But the money needs to go where the money needs to go. And if the money, if we got money to house the fire station with the, with the beds and stuff from Manchester, then put that money there, take that money where he's going to sell that fire truck and put on the debt that we owe so we can get out of there. That's, I mean, that's, all that other stuff you told me is relevant to me right now. Where is the money at? Where is the money? That's what I want to know. Where is the money? I'm sorry, I'm, there we go.
Okay, all right. Who's next in line? Go ahead, please.
I am, but, uh, Chief Williams, we already know that you had money come in from Manchester. It doesn't go in your pocket. It goes into the budget fund balance and, and.
Yes, ma'am.
It was already approved. And as it had a presentation, as well as we've been educated, as well as when it comes before the board, some of us say nay and some of us say yea, that we're going to vote on different situations. So it's not in your pocket. So again, I think the LGC, when a local government commission, has made it clear to us. That's why we have the proper people in place to find out exactly where taxpayer dollars went. You did your due diligence to make sure we received that money when you went down as an advocate to get this other fire station built as well. Um, as long as the citizens are being taken care of according to if they should have a fire, and we have the proper, uh, trucks in line, as well as the water pressure, then to move forward to continue to service, and Manchester money, again, where did it go? Because what no budget amendments coming for the board for us to approve it, our purchase orders, as they state. So again, that's why we have Nancy here. And again, I'll say again, I'm glad that she's here, as well as Mr. Mantha and Mr. Lindsay, because if they had not been here to bring this to light, where would we be? So I've made a motion that you could sell this truck, which would not go in your pocket. It still goes to the town for us to continue to go farther to take care of our citizens and their needs. So again, thank you again for always trying to get grants and being an advocate, uh, for that fire station when we broke ground.
Thank you, ma'am.
You welcome, sir?
And the motion was made and there was unreadiness. That's how we have gone from this, I don't know. That's how we've gone from this side to this side. And eventually we're going to come back to the middle and we're going to put it to a vote.
Right.
That's the democratic process.
That's it.
Those are unreadiness. And everybody had a chance or have a chance to voice their opinion. Now, next in order is Alderman Cooper and then Alderman O'Gara, and then it's going to come back to the middle and then we'll resolve it.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, thank you so much, Chief, uh, for all the work you do, um, you know, giving grants and everything. Uh, I did do my homework on this and I reached out to a few of my friends who are also, they're elected officials as well as firemen. They were, um, in their fire department. And, um, so this is, you know, that is about the average lifespan of a fire truck. Um, and it would be rather costly to continue to try to, to continue to utilize it. So that is why I, um, seconded the motion to sell this, uh, because it will soon become more of a liability than anything. And it's, uh, you know, it's a good thing to get some money out of it while we can. So, you know, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree that we should. And like I said, I did do the homework. I, I did the labor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman O'Gara.
I got just a couple of questions. Uh, what, how old is that truck?
How old a ladder truck?
Yes.
It is twenty, we got it two thousand one, so twenty years old.
Twenty years old, yes, sir. Uh, I was told that, it's been a while, that, uh, somehow nothing we come in the county to come across with about eighty thousand miles, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, do you remember that?
A hundred and eighty thousand?
Correct.
The come account, no, we, we get a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars from them every, every year.
Oh, it's a hundred and sixty-two thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so how much did that went toward building the present new fire station?
Uh, I would say none.
None. So how did that fire station get built? How did it pay?
We, right, we had went and we got a loan. We went, um, over to South River Electric. They used it and began all alone for zero percent financing, uh, for ten years. So we owe them a hundred thousand dollars. Actually, we owe them a hundred, it'd be a hundred and twenty-five because they deferred it the last two, the first two years for us. So we owe them a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year in, in two years when we're done with it.
Okay, so where is the payment that going to come out of?
It's going to come out of that hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
It'll come out to a hundred and sixty-two?
Yes, sir.
And how much of that payment going to be?
A hundred and twenty-five.
A hundred and twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
So, when's the next time we get paid?
It, it goes throughout the year. Um, November, around November, December, we'll get the seventy-five thousand dollar check. And then, um, the rest of it is for tax base. And so every month, they send us a check and it goes into the general fund.
Okay, so to me, after listening, Ms. Jackson, seems like, uh, we might want to wait until we get that money.
For?
To put back in a new, uh, location, in a new fire station.
Oh, you're saying hold off until we get the money to go in there?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we're talking about.
Well, that, that depends on.
Excuse me.
I, I know that I was getting late and I could feel the tension. I felt.
Good.
It's getting late. Now, I'm here in the middle and when somebody speaks, I hear some sighing. And you all out there may hear it as well. We all have the privilege and we ought to have the courtesy to hear each other out. Now, we've heard each other out for quite a while tonight, but right now, temperature is rising. Maybe you need to turn the hea, the air down some more, sir.
I can get it back now.
But we're going to get through this. And we're not going to have any more unnecessary debates. Because if we have to call for a recess, that might put us out of here at midnight. And we may need a recess for folks to calm down. Finish your point and then we are going to have to vote, please.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, I'm looking at basically what I would say, hold off. Seeing how we're presently in a budget crunch and the managers are excited, it's going to be tight. And I'd like to see the income of this fire truck go to paying off on one of our new fire trucks that we just got. Uh, and I'm sure you can understand why.
Sure, yeah, I, I, I mean, it's, it's y'all's money.
Yes, thank you.
And, and now we're ready to vote. And the motion is to go on and sell the fire truck. Now, part of what we discussed tonight too is that there are still things that need to be uncovered as, uh, Ms. Willenwafer and Nancy continue to do their work. A lot still has to be uncovered and unveiled to all of us. Because the question is asked, where is it, where is it going and, and whose money, who's pocket it's in? When, when they finish their thorough search, we will have some answers. Now, those in favor of the sale of this fire truck, make it known by the sign of aye, no, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the sign of nay? Now, I heard a fine old decision to sell this truck. And upon further investigation by our, uh, internal auditors, we'll know where the money went. Thank you. See how easy that was?
Yes, sir.
After going through what we did? Okay, uh, item R D, the appro, the approval of a budget amendment twenty-one point five. That's Chief Williams again.
Uh, yes, uh. Do you want to hand it off? You want to take this or you give this?
I would more have to. So, um, Chief Williams did get a grant from Cumberland County. You can see, um, the P O and she can further elaborate on what the grant was, but it was for the cost of sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. And it has been used for various items during the fight for COVID-nineteen. And anytime you receive, um, another revenue source, especially a grant, the town does get quite a few grants. We have to do a budget amendment, um, to appropriate for the appropriate revenue and expenditure line item. So this is what that does. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. If you want to look on the budget amendment sheet, you'll see before it was five hundred dollars. That is what, on the expenditure side. That was what originally was budgeted in that particular line item. The grant was in the, the check, is the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. So your increased expenditure, um, line item total is seventeen thousand three seventy-five. And all of the items that have been purchased will be purchased out of this expen, this expenditure account. Um, the value of purchases being booked back to it. And then you have the corresponding revenue to offset the expenditures, which is how you get to a, um, balanced budget. So that is the need for the budget amendment to ensure that we have the proper paperwork in place for the budget. And that is this fiscal year's budget.
Alderman Jackson?
So where is the money going to now?
COVID, COVID-nineteen, everything to COVID, everything for the stickers, for the plastic glass, everything we've had. This is the same grant that I came upon, uh, in front of you guys and asked for, and sixteen thousand came from the county. You guys approved me to put in for. We, we got the check and I turned it in and now, um, we're just waiting. Now it's going to get moved over the line so we can actually use it to, to purchase these things.
Got you. Thank you.
Uh, Alderman, who, who, um, Alderman Cooper, I missed it. Go ahead, please.
Um, I make a motion that we, uh, approve this, um, uh, budget amendment two, twenty-one five.
Alderman O'Gara.
Seconded motion.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the budget amendment twenty, twenty-one point five. All in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
And opposed, sign of nay. Thank you. Item, uh, E. Uh, General Manager, uh, Willen Weber.
Thank you, as I have discussed in the past, one sixty-D is state ma, state mandated changes. That was required, um, it was passed through session law, twenty nineteen, one eleven. Um, pre-COVID, um, opportunity, or municipalities had the opportunity to adopt these by January one. That was extended to July one. Um, the town has not started on this. I discovered that when I, when I started here. Um, Cumberland County is not responsible for updating these changes. Um, and it is quite substantial changes. It will involve the entire planning, zoning and subdivision code. And we have to do these by July one. It is by law that is required. Um, so you have two bids before you. One is with Stewart, which is a, um, private firm that does cleaning and development and other services for municipalities. And then I also got a quote from Triangle J Council of Governments. Um, so you have two bids before you. They will both be achieving the same exact thing, but I wanted the board to have two options to review. And I will be happy to answer any questions. Um, it is pertinent that this, this adopted, a firm is chosen tonight. We will then work quickly through their actual details of their contract and the amount will not exceed the amounts listed for whichever vendor is selected. But again, we have to get this done. That means, that entails going through every page in our existing code, having it updated. Has to go to the county planning board for adoption. Um, and then I have to come back before this board, before adoption, all by July one.
Alderman Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, can, uh, Ms. Willen Weber, can you, um, do you know when this was first presented to the town? Cause I know many other municipalities have already adopted theirs.
Um, I, I do not know the specific date. I asked, um, Ms. Jamie and she said she wasn't sure of when the county informed the town that it was their responsibility. Um, the session law again was in twenty nineteen. So it's been a few years or a couple of years since it has been adopted. Um, so I cannot tell you exact date of when the town's green light was notified, but upon my arrival and realizing it wasn't done, it's something that we have to be done to be compliant with the law.
Okay, thank you.
Typically, uh, who, do you know who it may have gone to? Uh, whether it would be the mayor or the town manager or, I mean typically?
Uh, it typically, since we do not have in-house planning department and the county does our planning, I would assume it went to someone in the administration. But I cannot tell you for sure. I don't know, but all I know is where we're at now and what we have to accomplish in two months. And it took nine, my previous placement form, it took nine months, but we're in crunch time.
Alderman Southern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve one sixty-D, which is a mandated charge. It just says motion to approve selected a firm.
Yeah, you got Stewart. It's, it's your motion, Alderman Southern.
Uh-huh. Well, you get what you paid for, but, uh, with our situation, I could, if y'all have looked into it already, we can go with Stewart.
Would you put that in a motion, please?
Yes, sir. Like to make a motion that we approve one sixty-D and, uh, council of government for Stewart for two thousand three hundred dollars.
Uh, that is not correctly stated.
What you want me to say?
You say, huh, you say council of government Stewart.
Yeah, it's what it say on here.
We move to approve Stewart as the...
Yeah, it says on here, the council of government. And well paid, where am I at?
Oh, I tried page fifty-two.
Yeah, page fifty-two.
Uh, under the summary, the last line under the summary.
So it's a board, so it uses the, like...
Oh, yeah, it's what it says. It says council of government for, uh, the three thousand and then it says our Stewart. So I am on the right page. I'm on page fifty-two and that's what it says. It says council of government for three thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven or Stewart for two thousand three hundred. So my motion is to appro, to approve. And you asked me to select a firm, so it would be Stewart for the two thousand three hundred dollars. That's what I stated.
Alderman O'Gara.
I seconded motion.
It has been moved and seconded, that we approve Stewart. All, all in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
And opposed, sign of nay. All right, and it's Willen Weber. Uh... Item nine F, and we will do these one, we'll do these one at a time. We'll approve one at a time, y'all then as a group. Ms. Uh, I'm sorry, Ms., uh... Corvella.
Good evening, Mayor Ward Baldwin. I bring to you tonight, um, actually five applications, we're going to go one by one for the recreation advisory committee. The first application is to appoint Mr. Derek Hudson for the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Okay.
I want to go with Pondor first.
Uh-uh, yeah, Pondor first.
Yeah, Pondor first.
Oh, I'm sorry. So appoint Mr. Henry Pondor for the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Uh, Alderman Southern.
So move.
Alderman O'Gara.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Mr. Henry Pondor to the Recreation Advisory Committee. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
And opposed, sign of nay. All right. Continue, uh, Ms., uh, Corvella.
The next application for Recreation Advisory Committee is to appoint Ms. Yolanda Burst for the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Is there a motion? Ald, Alderman Cooper.
I'm willing, we, uh, appoint Ms. Burst to the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Alderman O'Gara.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to appoint, uh, Yolanda Burst to the Recreation Advisory Committee. All in favor, sign of aye.
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 Continue, Ms. Corvella.
Next application for the Recreation Advisory Committee to appoint Mr. Derek Hudson for the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Alderman Southern.
So move.
It is, uh, Alderman Cooper.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, we appoint Mr. Derek Hudson to the Recreation Advisory Committee. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
And opposed, sign of nay.
Which next application is to appoint, I'm going to say a name wrong.
Ter, Ter, no, I was, down, Tara Robles.
Tara Robles for the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Ald, Alderman Cooper.
So move.
Alderman O'Gara.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
One more, um, uh, Ms. Corvella.
To appoint Ms. Sasha Arnold for the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Alderman Cooper.
So move.
Alderman O'Gara.
Second.
All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
So move. Congratulations to all five appointed to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Thank you all for your volunteer service and commitment to our wonderful town. Okay, uh, on, next on the agenda is, uh, is, uh, Alderman O'Gara.
Good of the order. Good of the order. But in the meantime... I've had some people come up to me looking for residents. Uh, they're looking for homes, places to stay. And, uh... I didn't know that things were so tight around here. But it's hard to find a house. What can I say? Look here, uh, out here on eighty-seven twenty-fourth. In front of the, uh, where our town bridges, we still have no lights. We have talked with DOT in the past and roughly about a year, year and a half ago, they agreed that they were going to get us some lights coming down that stretch of property. But we have had so much of a turnover here that it has pretty much just dropped out of sight. Uh, we've been talking to them about reducing the speeds out there. Uh, we're still a kill zone for people who are trying to cross the roads. Uh, I've also had conversations with people in the housing areas. And one has come to mind, and they've been here quite a few times, is Goodyear. You go down Odell Road and you make that first turn into Goodyear. And the people explain to me it's kind of like a runway. Uh, it does not cost a whole lot to put up a speed bump or two. Uh, Ms. Sanford in, uh, Deerfield, she's got a way of getting her point across when she comes in here. And I guarantee you, if you go by her house, you will see a speed bump. It's not a great big one, but just enough, something that we can afford to put out. Uh, and I'm hoping that we can try to do this in different areas, not just Goodyear. But, uh, maybe every other month, we just stick one out there. Knowing that we are poor and broke, but, uh, we need to do something. Uh, I'd already tell y'all that, uh, King Craft should be opening up on Friday. I believe they might have something for the board on Thursday. Maybe like a soft opening. Uh, and I did get a call from Alvin Lucas today. And he's definitely putting out requests for, uh, finance director for the board tomorrow morning. And, uh, I'm still looking for my, uh, receipt for the twenty-five thousand dollars. Thank you. That was it.
We will, Alderman Jackson.
I make a motion that we go into closed session. Send to N dot C dot G dot S one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A six personnel and pursuant to N C G S one forty-three three eighteen eleven A one privilege information.
Is there a second? Alderman O'Gara.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, we are going to close session for personnel and privilege information. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
And opposed, sign of nay.
Request for a two-minute break.
Request granted. Request granted.
I'm gonna go piss on myself.
We will entertain a motion. Aldra Woman Cooper.
I'll make a motion if we come back from closed session.
Aldra Woman Sutherland.
I second that motion.
It has been moved that we return from closed session. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
And opposed, sign of nay. All right, one more motion please. Aldra Woman Cooper.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that motion.
It's been moved a second, uh, second by the, uh, by Aldra Man O'Gara. That we adjourn, all in favor, sign of aye. And opposed.